Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission. I would like to ask Mr. Pruder to explain how the public can participate virtually in tonight's meeting. Mr. Pruder?
Evening and thank you Chair Dorn. Regarding the procedures for tonight's meeting in terms of communicating, planning commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of this meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. And we then kindly ask you to turn off your webcam and microphone when done with your presentation portion for your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone, giving you three minutes to speak. Alternatively, for those who are calling by phone for tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your phone's keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. Additionally, for any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another member of the public and both of you would like to speak publicly during this meeting, we kindly ask you to inform staff at the start of your meeting that another member of your party will be commenting and we will ensure that the other commenter will have an opportunity to speak after you have finished your comment. With that said, I hand it back to you Chair Dorn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna call the roll. Appreciate if all the commissioners would give me an audible response so we can get in the transcript. Commissioner Barnes?
Good evening, President.
Thank you. DeCarty?
Hello, everybody.
Harris?
Hi there, I'm here. Thanks.
Kennedy?
Here.
Riggs?
Good evening.
Tate?
Present.
And I'm here. So we have all seven members of the commission present and accounted for. I'd like to ask Ms. Sandmeyer if she has any reports or announcements for us to start.
Good evening Chair Dorn and Commissioners. I have no updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Not seeing any. So I'll move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. This is something seems there's often confusion about. If you have a comment about something on our agenda, there will be an additional opportunity later in tonight's program for you to make that comment. So, Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised now?
Thank you Chair Dorn. At this time, I see one hand raised. So I'll go ahead and allow that person to speak if you'd like to give me permission to do so.
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a second one as well. The first of which I will select here is calling by phone and their phone number ends in the digits 6335. And just so you're aware, a person commenting, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you could kindly state your name and your jurisdiction at the beginning of your public comment period to enter that into the record, that would be greatly appreciated. I'm now going to allow you to speak, so you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you. My name is Kim Novello. I appreciate this opportunity to address the commission this evening. I have unfortunately not been able to attend nearly as many meetings as I hope just due to personal and family matters. I've said things along this line in the past, but I just want to express again how important to me it is that if we are building bigger buildings and bringing more people into this area, that we consider not just the building themselves, but the places where the people that live in these buildings need to go. I recognize we have other commissions that cover these matters as well and I totally appreciate it. I've, you know, heard things like bringing in grocery stores and I have heard of amenities being offered. And I apologize if this is the wrong commission, but I don't think so. For the more people and the more units that we're bringing in, please seriously consider the additional space needed for parks as well as outdoor space that's useful for families, especially those with small children. I don't see a lot of these units providing like safe private space for kids where they can be left to run and play. That's not just out in the open where anyone like strangers can walk through a building space, but safe protected areas, especially for people like me that may need to be the mom in the house cooking a dinner but could really use the space outside for the kids to play and not necessarily have to be constantly monitored because it's not a safe, that's a space that's private just to the building users. And along those lines as well, I know in the past that units have been approved for, I think it was like commercial grade. And I've worked in offices that have commercial grade cabinetry and it's very dangerous actually, especially to young kids. They have sharp corners. It's not very nice. If we are gonna build buildings in this city, I hope that we have a standard where we're considering that human beings have to live in these buildings and that they have enough space, especially these days. People need more space for office space and I don't feel like that's being addressed, that apartments actually need to be bigger if people are working from home more as opposed to being smaller. And for those that are smaller, we need private outdoor space so that we can let our kids run free and not have to worry about strangers walking through the yards or kind of being open to the public. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Pruder, you say we had another hand raised?
It appears that hand has gone away, so I'm happy to wait another moment or we can close the public comment period.
Let's give them a minute.
Okay, great. And quickly as a reminder, I just announced earlier, but for folks interested in commenting, please press the hand icon. If you're on Zoom interface or calling by phone, please press star nine and you will be able to speak on this public comment period.
No hands raised?
I see one hand that has just risen, so I can give them permission to speak now at this time.
Yes, please.
Sure. We have a person by the name of Luis Bruce. I'm going to let you speak, but if you could please first state your name and your jurisdiction at the start of your comment. You'll also have three minutes to speak and I'm now allowing you to unmute yourself. You may begin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, I'm on my wife's Zoom, so my name's Owen Bruce, Robert Owen Bruce. I'm not a resident of Menlo Park, but I attend church in Menlo Park. Let me ask you a question. It's one, it's fairly quick. Is this park lane, park line project in cement now or maybe not? Are there other options that can be done with the location of some of the activities, building, et cetera, on this site? That's it.
Thank you. I think I can respond to that in the concept of providing general information, which is allowed under public comment. This is the first study session on this project, so we don't even have an application yet. There's a ways to go on this project. We have any other hands raised?
We do have an initial additional, sorry, commenter at this time by the name of Sue Connolly. I can have that person speak now if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, if you could please state your name and your jurisdiction at the start of your comment. You are now also getting three minutes to speak and I'll allow you to unmute yourself at this time.
Have we lost the speaker?
They should be able to speak. I'm sorry, Sue Connolly, if you could please, it looks like you've unmuted yourself. Just try to speak into your device. We can have you join the public comment.
Let's see. Sorry, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, great. Thank you. Sorry for the technical issues in high-tech land here. My name is Sue Connolly. I grew up in the area here, but I'm a resident in Burgess Classics. I'm not commenting yet. I'm saving my comments about the park line one. But I have a question overall for the planning commission and it's regarding emergency planning. I'm cert trained and I'm also very active in other emergency preparedness here in Menlo Park and working with some other towns as well through Menlo Park, Menlo Ready. And my concern is water. We unfortunately have half our snowpack. You know, we seem to be in an amazingly long drought and it's probably with climate change, not going to change. My concern is, is there a way that we can have underwater reservoirs for high-density places, you know, apartment buildings and such, so that people who are vulnerable during a big situation will survive? Because water is the chief thing. We can all live off body fat, or I certainly can for a while. But water is really kind of chief and foremost in my mind about not only emergency preparedness, but then also in terms of all the infrastructure pressures. So you don't need to answer my question. I just wanted to see if that's being considered with all these new developments all throughout Menlo Park being considered and already done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we do. I could introduce the next one if you'd like.
Please.
Okay, we have someone by the name of Peter C. I'm going to let you speak as well, but if you could also kindly unmute yourself. Looks like, I apologize, your hand has gone down. So, it's back. Okay, I'm sorry. Peter C., if you could please, okay, I apologize, the hand person went away again. So, don't see any hands. I think if you'd like, we could just, you know, close the public comment period. It appears that person has removed themselves from.
Okay, I am going to close the public comment and ask whoever has their mic unmuted that has a dog barking in the background, if you could go unmute while you're not speaking. Thank you. So I'm closing public comments, moving to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. The only item on consent calendar for this evening is the approval of minutes and court reporter transcript from January 24th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or additions or anything to the minutes that they would like to remove them from the consent calendar? Not seeing any. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar? Vice Chair DeCarty?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Riggs? Your mic is off, but I assume by raising your hand, you meant to second that motion, so I'll call the roll. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so the minutes are approved, the vote of seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. The first item under public hearing F1 is a use permit and a variance by Heather Young at 811 Bay Road. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing church and construct two new two-story single-family residences on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R3 apartment zoning district. The proposal includes a request for variance for the new residences to encroach into the required 20-foot separation between main buildings located adjacent lots. The project also includes administrative review of a condominium map. We have a staff report on this by Ms. Khan. Ms. Khan, do you have anything to add or anything to correct from the staff report?
Good evening Chair and fellow planning commissioners and members of the public. I do not have any updates to the published staff report. However, I'm here to take any questions. We do have the applicant team and the property owner with us today at the meeting and the applicant team will be providing us with a short presentation.
Great, thank you. Really clarifying questions from Ms. Khan before we go to the presentation. Not seeing any, so the applicant or their representatives can take it away, whatever word you like.
Hi, I'm Heather Young from Heather Young Architects, representing the ownership of the property at 811 Bay Road. Before I start my brief presentation, I would like to introduce the property owner here, Mr. Zach Trailer, to give him a chance to show himself and say a couple of words to you.
I think they like hiding my face here Heather. I can't get the video to work, but the mute, I have been unmuted, so thank you to y'all. And if, I'm trying to start the video, but it looks like the host has not allowed me to do that. But whenever it's, oh, there it is. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to meet all of you and thank you all for your time. We really appreciate it. I know you guys are very busy, especially with this next item coming up. So we're very thankful for the, for the time and energy tonight. I think Heather and her team have designed a really nice project for the site. It's a little tricky, but we do have access from two sides, one and the other, which the houses front on respectively. And we feel that this is an appropriate use for the site. There's housing on each side and while we'll be sad to lose the church, we do need housing in our, in our communities and hope that you all find this acceptable with this little variance. So I'll pass it on to Heather with all that and again, thanks a lot.
Thank you Zach. Vaughn, perhaps you could pull up our presentation? Thank you, and I'm, I think everyone can see this.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so yes, as Zach mentioned, oh, thank you very much. Thank you. As Zach mentioned, we're proposing to build two new single-family two-story homes at the existing property at 811 Bay and 810 Van Buren, which is in this triangular zone between Bay Shore Freeway and Bay Road and Madera. And this is rotated a bit with Bay Road and Van Buren. The existing neighborhood is, at this area is predominantly multifamily residences. There's a multifamily residence on the south edge and a single family, and then these are multis. There is a note in your packet about a requested variance and that's to address the southern edge of the site planned south where the existing residence is less than 10 feet from the property line. We are proposing that our project is 10 feet from the property line, but that is resulting in the condition of less than the 20 feet required and thus the variance. As you can see, the irregularly shaped lot, 162 feet, 112 feet, and then 60 feet on the ends is substandard, but we are trying to make the best of it with the 10-foot setbacks on the north and the south, the 20-foot setbacks on the two sides, equally dividing the site to have the two freestanding single-family homes. And as Zach mentioned, each one has a access directly from the adjacent road. So you really have a front yard on Van Buren, a small private yard in the back, another private yard and a front yard on Bay Road. You're also noticing that there is a primary driveway to an enclosed garage. This zone requires all parking be within the setback for this location. And so the second parking space, the more seldom-used parking space also is in the main structure and it has a Hollywood Strip paving to get to it. We have confirmed with transportation that the two curb cuts are allowed and are adequately far away from the neighbors. We're also proposing new screening trees on the south side to that closer property and new trees on Van Buren and another new tree here. There's an existing very mature redwood in the public right-of-way that is being preserved and protected. The other trees on the neighboring property are also being respected. As you saw in the report, the project is fully compliant regarding onsite setbacks and coverage and FAR. When we look at the elevations, this is, happens to be the Bay Road, but again, the Van Buren Road is a mirror of this. We are going the full width of the allowed property, but with a 35-foot maximum height, our project proposed at 27 feet, seven and a half, is well under the maximum building height. What you're seeing here is a composition of multiple mass and form to break down the scale and the block of the building itself. The white areas are a light-colored cement plaster. The vertical siding is cedar and a standing seam metal roof. So we are having a number of high-quality materials on all of the elevations. And as I mentioned, the mass is broken down to respect the tapering of the lot. And then this is the long facade on the driveway, excuse me, the trash and recycling side and the rear elevation. The materials and finishes, as you see here, that second floor has the vertical cedar siding, the light-colored cement plaster. There are accents with cantilevered awnings and porches all around. The windows and doors are very high-quality exterior metal clad interior wood. We have concrete precast pavers and a permeable driveway and again, the standing seam metal roof. We sincerely hope that you will find that the project is well-crafted for the site and supports the planning ordinance for this area and that you will approve the variance, the use permit, and that we may proceed with our building permit application. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Do we, I want to open it up for public comment in just a minute. I want to see if we have any clarifying questions from the commission before I do that. Not seeing any, so I would like to open this project up to public comment this time. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised?
Thank you Chair Dorn. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, but as a reminder from members of the public, if you press the hand icon or if calling by phone star nine, we can give you permissions to speak and provide a public comment for this project. We can wait a moment if you prefer.
Yeah.
Great.
No hands raised?
Still no hands raised, Chair Dorn.
Okay, I will close public comment this time, bring it back to the commission for discussion. And I see Commissioner Riggs has his hands raised.
Yes, I just have one brief question because it wasn't clear in the staff report. Although I suspect I know the answer. Can we clarify if the windows, which appear to have mullions, whether this is true divided or simulated true divided light?
They would be simulated true divided light with the spacer between the glass layers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm muted. More, yes, sorry. More of an observation. That site is, I would say, one of the more challenging and encumbered sites in that neighborhood, given its adjacency to 101 and Van Buren at that point is almost an access road, a service road. And Bay, because that now that sits on the back, right there, that sits at the back end of the Menlo Park Palo Alto VA. It's an intrigue, you know, it's an intriguing investment. And so I'm really, I'm just, just for observation, just curious, you know, given the location, you know, these are, you know, these are houses that are spec houses, right? So is there a demand for that type of house, you know, in a, in a, in a challenge, in a challenging physical environment?
I can comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say we'll find out. I mean, we think there is and I certainly think there's a need for all, you know, all kinds of housing in all kinds of places. And I think it's, it would be a great place to live. It's a great school district and I think that there, you know, some nice neighbors that we know that we've met along the way that are, that live close by with young families. So it's really, you know, I think it's, I think it's better used as housing than just about anything else. I guess you could say it could be a great apartment site as well. But the problem is you can't park, you know, on a small site like that. Otherwise, we would, we would be inclined to look at that. And, and so, you know, really it is the best use. And is it a giant home run of a money maker? No. But it's a good use of space for the housing that's much needed in our communities.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I just had a question about the two one-car garages. I see that you're probably trying to solve for the space and I'm just wondering if you were not required by Menlo Park to put in two spaces, either two spaces uncovered or one space covered and the, and the other one not in, in line with the first one, would you have only put in just one car garage for each one of these?
That's an excellent question and we work very closely with our planner Fatim Khan. Our original proposal had shown an uncovered parking space in the side yard setback on the north side. And unfortunately, we had misunderstood the zoning requirement that both parking spaces be within that 10-foot or outside of the 10-foot setback. So yes, if, if, if we had not had that requirement, it would have been a very different project. And as Zach mentioned, it's, it is a very challenging site. And again, I want to thank the Fatim and, and the Transportation Department for working with us on this to come up with this solution.
Yeah, bummer. I think that the future is, we're not gonna need to, I, I hope soon, we're not gonna require this. I appreciate your answer and I appreciate your working with the city on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Tate?
Yes, I just, I have a comment and, and also I appreciate Commissioner Harris's question about the parking and which drove Mr. Taylor to actually talk a little bit about what my comment is. Currently, houses of worship are being encouraged to do multifamily and this is like a perfect location. And with the parking being an issue, and Mr. Taylor? And with the parking being an issue, and Mr. Taylor, Taylor has already mentioned that, you know, of course apartments would be suitable for this lot. I wish there was some sort of way to even do a fourplex on this lot, of course, with the parking constraints, because it is the best use, I believe, of, of the surroundings as Commissioner Kennedy brought up. Great to be able to have, have multifamily there because it would definitely be following the trend that's happening across the country, and Canada is already doing it with having multifamily on sites that had previously been or are currently places of worship. But thank you for the effort.
Yeah, I can't disagree. You know, we're, we're building small apartments all up and down the peninsula right now. We thought this would also be a good site for it, but the, the parking requirements are just too troubling, unfortunately, and it's makes essentially impossible to, to do, to do apartments there. But I, we, we can't disagree with the sentiment, though.
Right, and what a disappointment, and, and I, I agree, you know, with Commissioner Harris that hopefully one day we won't have such stringent parking requirements so that we can have multifamily in, in smaller locations instead of just bigger, bigger units like the one we're gonna be hearing later.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy?
Terrific, keeping this conversation going because I think it is incredibly timely. You know, I do think, and this is yet again an observation, but sort of like, you know, building on both Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Tate. You know, some of our, some of our neighborhoods do lend themselves to informal multifamily houses, right, or intergenerational houses. There are houses in some parts of Menlo Park where there are 12 family members living in one house, and there's a lot of cars. And I think that's, there's gonna come a time where this push, you know, this antiquated rule around parking on the street overnight is going to have to go away if we're going to make any dent progressively and humanely into the severe housing shortage that we have in this community, up and down, up, up, up and down in the Bay Area. And, you know, it is on, you know, we received a comment tonight on another project that really puts into perspective what we are asked to do as planning commissioners. And one of those things, I think, is to push back on things when they need to change. And I do think that it is time that we reviewed and looked at outdated, you know, outdated policies on, on, you know, on parking and overnight parking and, and the requirement for a house to be able to house two, two cars. So that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I'll just add my own comment that, you know, generally, I think the standard for variances is pretty high, but I do feel this project meets the standard. You know, the nonconformity is, is based on neighboring property. And I think that it'd really be wrong to basically penalize this applicant for something that another property owner did on their property, built a nonconforming property. So I'm certainly favorably inclined towards the variance request. Commissioner Riggs?
I happen to agree with the chair's comments, and since, for what it's worth, I find the project to be attractive and suitable for the location. I would like to move to make the findings and approve the use permit.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Who wants to second the motion? I believe I'm allowed to second it from the chairs, I'm gonna do that and put it to a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Vice Chair DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And I'll vote in favor as well, so the motion passes and the findings are made by a vote of six in favor and one against. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item F2 is a use permit, architectural control, low-market rate housing agreement, heritage tree removals, and associated environmental review by Andrew Marcos, Marcos for Gray Star at 165 Jefferson Drive, the Menlo Flats Project. This is a request for a use permit, architectural control, environmental review, low-market rate, EMR housing agreement, heritage tree removals, and EMR housing density bonus to redevelop the project site with approximately 158 multifamily dwelling units and approximately 15,000 square feet of commercial space on 1.38, 38-acre parcel. The proposed mixed-use building would be eight stories in height, including three levels above grade podium parking. The commercial space would be located on the first and second floors. The project site is located in our MUB residential mixed-use bonus zoning district. The project site currently contains a one-story approximately 24,300-square-foot office building that would be demolished. The proposed building would contain approximately 153,964 square feet of gross floor area of residential uses. The floor area ratio approximately 256%. The proposed building would contain a commercial component of approximately 15,000 square feet gross floor area. The floor area ratio approximately 25%. The proposal includes a request for an increase in height, density, and floor area ratio, FAR, under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The applicant is proposing to pay the community amenities in lieu fee for the proposed project. The proposed project would include a below-market rate housing agreement that requires a minimum of 15% of the units or 21 units of the 138 maximum units allowed by the zoning ordinance before accounting for 20 bonus units be affordable. The applicant is proposing to incorporate 20 additional market rate units, which are included in the total 158 units, per the density bonus provisions of the EMR housing program, chapter 16.96.040, which allows density and far bonuses and exceptions to the city zoning ordinance requirements where EMR units are incorporated into the project. The proposed project includes the removal of two heritage trees. We have a staff report on this project by Ms. Baggett. Do we have any additional, any additions or corrections to the staff report?
Yes, I do have a brief presentation that I would like to run through with your permission, sir.
Okay. Yeah, this is the time for that, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you, Juan. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission and members of the community. The purpose of tonight's meeting for this item is to review the final environmental impact report and project entitlements for the Menlo Flats project that's located at 165 Jefferson Drive. The project planning entitlements, as, as we read previously, include a use permit, architectural control, middle market rate, uh, uh, housing agreement, oh, oh, not sure why this is. Okay, I'm sorry, I lost my presentation. Not sure what's going on here. I'm sorry about that. I think Juan is trying to fix the problem. Sorry about that. So I'm saying, we are here to review the Menlo Flats project at 165 Jefferson. And, and the entitlements for the project include a use permit, architectural control, middle-market rate housing agreement, the open space agreement, and also the approval of the proposed community amenities for the project. The project site is located on Jefferson Drive, and it's surrounded by the Menlo Porto project that's currently under construction. And the project site is located south of the Beaufort Expressway and East of Marsh Road. For the review of this item, staff recommends that, after my brief presentation, that you allow the EIR consultant to walk through the final environmental impact report findings and the sequel process, following which I would request that the applicant come forward and review the details of the project. Staff recommends that, after that, you would take public comments on the project and then end the meeting with discussion, deliberation, and a vote. So just a brief overview of the project. The proposed project is a mixed-use building that will be developed by demolishing the existing building on site. The building consists of 158 multifamily apartment units that are made of studios and four bedrooms, along with 13,000 square foot of office space and 1,600 square foot of commercial use. The project includes below-market rate units, 21 in total, at various income levels. The below-market rate proposal was reviewed by the Housing Commission on February 2nd, and the Housing Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of the 21 inclusionary housing units at a mixed income to planning commission. The project is proposing to provide no onsite community amenities, but instead pay an in-lie fee of approximately $4.8 million. As part of the EMR housing that the project is providing, the project is recommend, is requesting waivers to reduce the residential parking by 20 spaces and minor change to the average heights. It's, it's a little bit of an increase that they are requesting. And last, lastly, consistent with the Connect Menlo land use element, the project will be providing public per seal that connects Jefferson Drive and Constitution Drive on its eastern property line. Um, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions, so define the final environmental impact report prepared for the project, adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and adopt the CECL findings prepared for the project. Additionally, staff is recommending that the planning commission would adopt resolutions approving the use permit, the architectural control permit, the below-market rate housing agreement, the open space agreement, as well as approve the applicant's proposal for paying the community amenities in lieu fee. All the actions taken tonight will be subject to the conditions of approval that are attached to the staff report. I have a minor amendment to the staff report. The staff report states that the finished floor elevation for occupiable spaces should be 24 inches above from the base flood elevation, but in fact, that should be 12 inches, since the project site is under two acres. With that, I would like to turn it over to the chair and with your permission, welcome the CECL consultant to give their presentation. And of course, I'm available for any questions that you might have today evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I think your proposed word makes sense. Unless we have some objections from the commission, I'd like to proceed with it and ask the ER, EIR consultant for their presentation.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Wiswell with LSA, the city consultant for environmental review of the project. With me tonight are Teresa Wallace and, who's our principal in charge, and Dean Orizabal, who's our principal transportation planner. So I'll go over the elements of the final EIR that's under consideration for certification tonight, beginning with a bit of background on the overall environmental review process as well. This slide shows an overall timeline for my environmental review, which began when the city issued a notice of preparation or an NOP, notifying all parties and responsible agencies that an EIR would be prepared. An initial study was also prepared and circulated with the NOP for review. All public comments received during the 30-day scoping period were considered during preparation of the draft EIR. The city and LSA and our technical specialists then prepared the draft EIR after the close of the 40, and after the close of the 45-day public comment period on December 9th, we prepared written responses to each substantive comment on the adequacy of the EIR analysis in what's referred to as a response to comments document. The response to comments document was then published and available for review on March 16th, or more than 10 days before this hearing, as is required by the California Environmental Quality Act. The, this environmental analysis for this project tears from the Connect Menlo final EIR. Connect Menlo EIR provided a program-level analysis of the development potential envisioned for the entire city, including the increased development potential specifically in the Bayfront area where the project is located. The Connect Menlo EIR evaluated the impacts of approximately 2.3 million square feet of non-residential space, 400 hotel rooms, and 4,500 residential units. This project, the Menlo Flats project, fits within the development assumptions of the Connect Menlo EIR. And then a settlement agreement between the city of East Palo Alto or with the city of East Palo Alto requires certain projects that tier from the Connect Menlo EIR, including those utilizing bonus level development like the proposed project to conduct a focused EIR with regard to housing and transportation. The environmental review of the, of this project complies with the terms of the settlement agreement. As I mentioned before, an initial study was circulated with the NOP. Based on the conclusions of the initial study, the topics that are shown on this slide were not further evaluated because the project would not be anticipated to result in significant effects related to those issue topics, or because the initial study found that those topics were adequately addressed through the program-level EIR prepared for Connect Menlo, including the mitigation measures that were identified in the EIR. So based on the analysis in the initial study, the topics of population and housing, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise were further evaluated in the focused EIR. This slide gives a, an overview of the draft focused EIR findings for each topic. The main takeaway here is that there were no significant unavoidable impacts that were identified, and that all impacts reduced to a less significant level with the implicit implementation of mitigation measures if necessary. The draft EIR also evaluated a range of alternatives to the project with the objective of avoiding or reducing potential impacts of the project. While a number of alternatives were considered, the EIR included a full analysis of three alternatives, in addition to the CECL required no-project alternative. And those three development alternatives are summarized in this slide. Ultimately, it was decided that in terms of environmental impacts, the all-residential alternative would be the superior environmental alternative because it would reduce impacts compared to the proposed project, and mitigation measure TRA-1 would not be required. So this slide gives an overview of the response to comments document and what's included in that. The three letters were received during the 45-day comment period, one from a public agency and two from individuals. The Sequoia Union High School District letter cited a number of concerns related to impacts on schools, and the two letters from individuals outlined concerns related to tribal cultural resources and overall concerns or support related to the merits of the project. All of these comments were responded to in writing in the response to comments document. As you're aware, you also provided comments during the draft, during the draft EIR hearing and asked a number of clarifying questions, which were generally answered during the hearings, but were also further responded to in the response to comments document as well. And then lastly, the response to comments document also includes some minor corrections and clarifications to the draft ER that, EIR that were made in response to comments or that were initiated by staff or LSA. So with completion of the response to comments document, LSA and city staff have determined that none of the comments on the draft EIR disclose any new significant information. No new significant or substantially more severe environmental impacts have been identified, and no new feasible mitigation measures or alternatives have been identified which are considerably different from others previously identified, analyzed, sorry, and the draft EIR did not require any recirculation. As I mentioned before, we're now considering the final EIR, which includes that first draft EIR and the more recent response to comments document, as well as the mitigation monitoring and reporting program or NMRP for the project. The NMRP The N M R P identifies all the applicable mitigation measures from the initial study and the draft D I R, which includes also the mitigation measures from the Connect Menlo E I R and any project specific mitigation measures. The project sponsor will be required to comply with these measures when implementing the project. And the N M R P identifies the timing and oversight responsibilities for each measure. So that concludes my overview of the E I R process. One final point I want to make is about the adequacy of the final E I R. The planning commission is being asked to decide whether or not the final E I R is adequate. And that's the standard for adequacy for an E I R from the C Q guidelines is shown on this slide. Basically, the purpose of C Q, which is a state law, is to inform the public and decision makers of the environmental effects of a project, identify any ways in which adverse environmental effects can be avoided or reduced, avoid impacts to the environment where feasible, and to disclose the public reasons, to disclose to the public the reasons why the lead agency, the city, may approve a project which has adverse environmental effects. The adequacy of the of an E I R is determined in terms of what is reasonably feasible in light of factors such as the magnitude of the project, the severity of its likely environmental impacts, and the geographic scope of the project. So the planning commission is being asked to determine if the basic purposes of C Q have been fulfilled and if, based on their own independent judgment, the E I R is adequate. And that's all I have for you tonight, and I'm of course available to take any questions you have.
Thank you. I think our suggested format is to go to the go to the applicant's presentation next and open the public comment and then have questions. So I'd like to try to stick to that format. We have presentation from the applicants.
Good evening, Chair Doran and planning commissioners, members of the public. Let me just make sure I have access here. All right. So again, good evening. My name is Andrew Morcos. I'm here representing Gray Star. Here to give you an update on Menlo Flats. It's our third multifamily project following the passage of Connect Menlo general plan amendment. I'll provide a brief overview and update on the project. And then Clark Manis, our architect, and Karen Karloski, our landscape architect, will finish up the presentation. And happy to answer any questions. So just as a quick overview on Gray Star and Menlo Park. Between this project, Menlo Flats, our recently approved projects, Menlo Uptown and Menlo Portal, and our completed project along Menlo Park, we're working with the city to provide over eleven hundred homes. Over a hundred and forty of these homes will be affordable B M R units. To go over some project highlights, Menlo Flats consists of one hundred and fifty eight homes made up of studios and four bedrooms, four baths, and just under fifteen thousand square feet of non-residential space. Twenty one of these units will be B M R units at a mix of affordability levels. And they are located onsite and equitably distributed throughout the project. For our community amenity, we are providing a four point eight million dollar community amenity in Lufi. This is the community amenity appraised value of four point four million dollars plus a ten percent administrative fee per the city's code. For open space, we are providing over fifty two hundred square feet of publicly accessible open space, which exceeds the requirement by almost forty percent. We are also providing connectivity through a publicly accessible paseo that promotes walking and biking through the site and two hundred and sixty five bicycle parking spaces onsite. From an environmental perspective, this project is among the most ambitious in the region with lead goal design standards, all electric design, and a hundred percent renewable energy, pre-wiring for a hundred percent E V charging. And overall, the project is a hundred percent compliant with all the city's objective standards. I'll dive in a little bit into community outreach that we've done since before twenty twenty, when this project was first introduced to the public. In June twenty twenty, we sent six thousand flyers to Bell Haven, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto neighborhoods to provide an overview and opportunity for one-on-one discussions. In November twenty twenty one, we again sent out six thousand, over six thousand flyers to the community and offered two virtual community meetings hosted on November sixth and November tenth. And since April twenty twenty, we've had many one-on-one phone calls and conversations with community members. And we've done presentations to the Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce. How has this, you know, community outreach impacted our development? First, it helped us locate the publicly accessible open space adjacent to the paseo and really integrate it that way. We've, we heard from the community and from city council subcommittee that the community amenity list needed to be updated and that there were some requests around how we approach that. And around the B M R units, there was a request for us to look at equivalent alternative B M R units rather than having all the B M Rs at low income to provide a mixture of B M Rs at the different affordability levels, which we've done, and I can go through here. Just to dive in to that, the B M R mix includes twenty one below market rate units. The Housing Commission unanimously approved the B M R alternative shown here, which includes four very low income units, twelve low income units, and five moderate income units. And all of these are capped at seventy five percent of a comparable market rate per Menlo Parks code. To dive into the community amenity, which has been a long and evolving process. Again, we are proposing four point eight four million of a community amenity in Lufi. And just to go back a little bit on the history, Menlo Flats had initially planned for a cafe onsite. However, one eleven independence, which is a nearby project, was approved for their entitlement with a cafe as their community amenity. Once an amenity on the community amenity list is approved as part of our project, it's no longer available to future developments. Furthermore, on April twentieth, twenty twenty one, the city council ad hoc subcommittee on Connect Menlo Community Amenities presented a revised list and started the process, a revised community amenity list, and started the process of adopting in Lufi. The community amenity in Lufi passed on June twenty second, twenty twenty one. And on the next slide, I'll just quickly show the proposed community amenity list revisions and not intending for anyone to read this, but if you just look at the yellow highlights, those are what the subcommittee had intended would stay on the revised proposed community amenity list, and I can go through those in a bit more detail. The proposed list now includes six options, which are either unavailable or infeasible for Menlo Flats. So number one is the urgent care, which was provided by our other project, Menlo Uptown, as their approved amenity, which is under construction currently. Second was a grocery store, which is included in the proposed meta development, but is and is not feasible for this project just because of size limitations. And the cafe was one eleven independents approved amenity, so it's unavailable for our project. Pharmacies also included in Metas development and not feasible for this location, given the size and cost. And then undergrounding power lines and the highway one-on-one sound walls. The costs and scope far exceed the four point four million dollars available through this project. And using this project to advance those amenities would be not cost efficient or efficient for the community. It'd be a lot of stopping and starting as other developers picked up where we would have left off. And frankly, we wouldn't have been able to get a lot done with it. Given the lack of options and feasible amenities, Flats is providing a community amenity in Lufi totaling four point eight four million. With that, I would like to hand it over to Clark Manis from Heller Manis, who is our architect on this project, and he will go through the architecture.
Terrific. Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Chair Doran and fellow commissioners. Glad that we are before you for this hearing. So in our brief presentation tonight, both Karen and I will focus on how our final design has been refined both at the ground plane level and on a key facade details. While the corner amenity space that Andrew's mentioned has changed relative to its potential use, the paseo entry has always offered the opportunity that we feel to create a dynamic in public space that offers a peek at the active rich residential open space that's on the podium above. Next. So with regard to the exterior materials, we've been pretty consistent and shared those with you. The exterior facade materials are crisp. They're a combination of fiber cement, dark and light smooth trowel stucco, dark finish storefront and green screens. And the expression that we have always been consistent in articulating is that both the commercial and the residential uses are woven together in the facade. Next. So at the building entry that serves both pedestrians and vehicles, as you can see in the foreground, the verticality of the corner really serves as a beacon that will help to merge both the residential and commercial uses. And this is especially important, as we all know, in this post pandemic year. Next. So along the paseo, along its length, greening has been introduced in order to provide a way to soften the portions of the building, particularly at the ends of the residential wing, as well as also accommodating a backdoor access to the building for residents, a bike room access, and a pet spot. Next. From the adjacent uptown project, you can see both the north and the west facades. And both facades accommodate plane changes that are really essential and provide the continued emphasis for us, as I said earlier, on greening the lower portions of the facade. The setbacks above, where the building steps back above the podium, offers the opportunity to strategically locate some private decks for units. Next. And looking at the site from the adjacent uptown project, which Andrew mentioned earlier, you can see both the north and west facades. And the north facade here that's within this uptown townhouse site, the plane changes that you see in the front continue to emphasize the importance of greening the lower portions of the building and providing integration for the adjacent uptown project. Next. So I like this particular view very much because it really is a bird's eye view and provides you the opportunity to really continue to appreciate how we evolve the concept. And in that concept, one of the things that we thought was very important was providing the ability for the mass to step down to the corner, emphasize the importance of the opening of the paseo, as well as also offering a gesture towards the way that the paseo integrates with the deck. Next. And just a refresher on the floor plans. On the left is the ground floor plan. The lobby is in pink. The commercial space is in blue, and both of them do a very good job of concealing the parking from view from Jefferson Drive. One of the things that we felt was very important. And on the right is a typical floor plan, which we shared with you before. It illustrates the configuration of typical floor as well as an overlay on what the podium courtyard deck appears like. Next. So I'm available if you have any questions. And with this, I want to turn this over to Karen, who can share more details on the Paseo Plaza as well as the paseo itself.
And thank you, Clark. I guess my video is not showing, so I'll just proceed. Good evening, commissioners. Karen Karlefsky with PGA Design Landscape Architect, the project. Hold on, video starting. No, it's not starting. I'll just continue without. Thank you. And so again, Karen Karlefsky with PGA Design, the landscape architects for the project. And I'm going to go over refreshing and refresh your memories on the landscape spaces that we have designed for the project. And on this slide, you can see our podium and roof deck spaces and their relationship to the publicly accessible spaces below, which includes the front eastern plaza and the paseo spaces. We have progressed the plaza design to activate the space with the surrounding neighborhood. And there are doors which open out from the non-residential space that will fully open to the exterior plaza space. The patios, the wooden patio steps will are tiered wooden seating, which create an invited inviting and activated corner. Next slide. This corner is a welcoming connection of public and private space. And the paseo is fourteen feet wide with modulations of pavement, paved space from ten to fourteen feet. And half of the paseo is built with this project, but functions as a full public space, providing all the required paseo elements. And will stand on its own until the adjacent one seventy five Jefferson project will complete the rest of the paseo. And on this slide, we're just showing some of the other elements, seating elements that will be installed as part of the paseo and dog run area. And next. So this concludes our presentation for tonight, and thank you for having us present today.
Thank you. So the suggested format called we're opening public comments now before questions from the commission. So I would like to stick to that suggestion. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised from the public for a public comment?
Thank you, Chair Doran. As an update, I don't see any hands at this time, but just to remind the public, if you'd like to publicly speak for this item, please feel free to press the hand icon on your interface, or if you're calling by phone, press star nine. And we can wait a moment if you'd like to see any comments.
No hands raised?
That's correct, Chair Doran. I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, I will close public comment. And now open up for questions, and I think we can combine questions and comments from the commission at this point. So Commissioner Ricks.
Thank you, Chair. I have to start with a question, just a clarification from the E I R presentation, if I may.
Sure.
And that is, when this project E I R indicates no impacts, no significant impacts, are we correct in assuming that that is in comparison with the Connect Menlo E I R status?
Yeah, so we're saying that this project on its own has no significant unavoidable impacts beyond what was previously analyzed in Connect Menlo. So this, this impact is no different than Connect Menlo.
Right, so there are unavoidable impacts to traffic. Obviously, Bayfront Expressway is going to be affected by another hundred and fifty eight living units. Even if at some point, some of the occupants work within bicycle distance. We know that many of them will work in Mountain View or Redwood City or San Mateo.
Can I, can I just clarify on that real quick?
Oh, yes, please.
So yes, you are correct that Connect Menlo identified some significant unavoidable. So yes, you are correct that Connect Menlo identified some significant unavoidable transportation impacts. However, with the recent shift from level of service to VMT, that's not an impact that is considered significant for Menlo flats anymore.
Okay, so it would be a real life impact, but it is no longer an EIR impact.
It's not an environmental impact, that's correct.
Okay. It's very helpful to clarify that, relevant to all projects. And then I do have a question for Mr. Marcos. If I may. And this has to do with the community amenity. Good evening, Andrew. So you indicate that a pharmacy is not viable due to lack of space. But is that's because the commercial space is limited to 1600 square feet?
No, so it's actually a combination for a community amenity to work within a project. It has to do a few things. One, it has the amount of the community amenity in Menlo flats case is 4.4 million, has to correspond with the amount of space we have, has to correspond with the community amenity selected. And so for a pharmacy, the request on the community amenity list is a 15,000 square foot pharmacy. And while we have that amount of commercial space, our community amenity is only 4.4 million. And that would 15,000 square foot pharmacy far exceeds 4.4 million in terms of the amount. And so it's a little bit maybe not worded the best way, but that's what was intended.
I understand then. Okay, thank you very much. And then I think we had spoken back in November about activating the ground floor. And I guess this would primarily apply to the commercial space. How how is the project addressing that?
Yeah, so we've really focused on that front corner where the publicly accessible open spaces, you can see in some of the renderings that there's tables and chairs for seating. I think it's still intended that this could be used as a cafe or it could be a yoga studio or some other active use. The 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 glazing on that that side of the building opens up completely. And so there's a real connection between the interior and the exterior. And the steps from the publicly accessible open space will provide seating for anybody and hopefully really activate that space, no matter what use is there.
All right, so potentially it could even be a combination bookstore cafe like from Palo Alto's University Avenue at one time. And will will Gray Star be pursuing such tenants particularly?
Yeah, I think, you know, that type of tenant is also a great amenity for our tenants living in the apartments. And so this is, it's really is intended to be something that works both for the community and for the tenants of the building. I think that we will be, you know, in the retail market, we're just gonna have to see what's available for a project like this in this location.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. We have other commissioners that would like to speak on this application.
Thank you Chair Doran. I have a couple of questions and then I'll go ahead and comment on the five elements we're asked to tonight. So starting on the EIR, and I appreciate Commissioner Riggs starting us off. It's good to see you again, Mr. Wazwell, and I appreciate in the final EIR addressing a lot of the questions that I had raised last time. And as I said last time, I really appreciate the reduced parking alternative. I think it's critical and as, as you know, and as my fellow commissioners go, no, I will not vote that a future EIR is adequate without this type of fourth alternative. And so really appreciate that it's in there. But even after our exchange last time and reading the final EIR, I'm still not quite sure I understand how that reduced parking scenario was developed. So I thought maybe I would just say what I think I understand, and then you can correct me as opposed to making you go through the whole thing. So first of all, I guess is the question, which is, how did you decide what level of reduced parking to use? What was the driving factor in the number of spaces reduced?
So the reduced parking alternative is is was proposed to try and minimize the VMT impact related to office uses. In particular, we kind of discussed last time about how the reduction is calculated and it's based on the demand for parking spaces as opposed to what's proposed. So in this case, I believe the VMT reduction needed was somewhere around 20%. And the reduction percentage provided by the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association caps the reduction related to reduced parking at a 12% VMT reduction. So we use the maximum reduction possible in order to determine how many parking spaces to reduce, whatever number of parking spaces would get would get us to that 12% reduction in VMT. Which turned out to be about nine spaces, I believe.
Yeah, I understand. I guess I just don't understand what's, why not go to a further reduction in VMT? What's the, what what other variable increases in some way that it ruins the analysis?
So like I said, it's based on the air pollution officers. They have a report for quantifying how much VMT is reduced for any range of mitigation measures, reduced parking being one of them. And I believe the thinking is that if you reduce parking too much, there would still be a finite number of people that drive to a site and look for parking. So once you reduce too far beyond the demand, you start to see impacts related to circling for parking as in people are driving, literally driving around the neighborhoods, looking for parking. And there's, there's a point of diminishing returns for that where you reduce parking, but you don't see the VMT benefit because there are still a certain number of people who will still drive. So it's, it's, it's 12% is the is the limit, because that's as conservative as they felt comfortable quantifying in that production.
And when did they come up with that analysis that you used? Does that go all the way back to Connect Menlo or something before then, or is this a recent figure that you're using?
It's a statewide report, actually, and I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it's within the last 10 years, and I know it was also recently updated as well.
Is that same figure used for commercial purposes regardless if it's office or if it's retail or if it's other uses?
Yeah, they only separated between residential and commercial.
I'll just say intuitively, that makes no sense to me. If I'm coming to an office for work and I'm commuting and I know every day that I have reduced parking, I'm gonna make a different choice. I can completely understand if I'm coming to the store that I visit every now and then, and I'm now struck with the fact that I can't park and I drive around. So just for that reason, I'm dubious about the utilization of that figure. So, so you reduced it by a limited number of parking spaces. And then in reading this through, essentially, you go through and there are no other negative impacts anywhere else. So now we just get into the VMT reduction. And at the end of the day, you say, in fact, there is a benefit, slight benefit to having the VMT reduction associated with that slight number of parking spaces. But then at the very end, you say that it ultimately doesn't make any difference because we'll relax the TDM requirements on the project. Why is that in an EIR like that? And why is that trade off put in place?
I wouldn't say it relaxes the TDM requirements. The city has transportation guidelines that require a TDM plan to achieve a minimum reduction percentage. So the, what the reduced parking alternative would do, sorry, let me back up. So the, the TDM has a minimum of 20% trip reduction that's required. The project has to reduce VMT on top of what's already accounted for by the TDM program. So what this, what this mitigation measure does, it said it accounts for the 20% and then it proposes measures beyond that to achieve the necessary VMT reduction. So the reduced parking alternative says that you have to do fewer additional measures on top of the TDM program. So the, the, the TDM itself is not relaxed. It's the additional measures on top of it, that there would be fewer required, but they still would be required to hit the the goal VMT percentage.
So the toggle here is with the city's TDM program and how it is set and how those, how it needs to be met by a developer. Is that the way to say that?
No, I don't think I would characterize it that way because the the TDM is is required. And there's, like I said, there's a minimum that the applicant has to hit. And in being conservative, the city has decided that that's the maximum reduction that that should be assumed. Because TDM measures are are hard to quantify. So it's, it's the, if a project, if this project, if it, if the VMT reduction needed to be, say, 18% that then the minute, then the TDM plan would would cover it completely. However, because this project needs, I believe it's around 30% reduction, there are additional measures on top of the TDM. That so the, the, the change is is not to the TDM, the change is to the additional measures.
Okay, I won't take more time. I'll just flag that I really appreciate it. I'm glad it's in here. I think this is hugely relevant for future projects to the conversation we just had about the approval of the project on Bay Road. And this question about where does traffic go? Does it park on the street or how do you limit that? And then the benefit that we can have, if you don't have to build parking, that we can actually use the uses for other things. I think as a planning commission, as we look at future projects, we have to look at these types of alternatives in the EIR. I really appreciate it. I just only wish that the EIR was a little bit more comprehensive in the spread and perhaps more comprehensible to laypeople in the community to be able to form some opinions about what the, what the right level should be in the future, but that's a future comment. And then my last question is, did you, so LOS is something that the state doesn't mandate, we don't need to do in order to meet state requirements, but we've decided to do as a city. Do you do LOS stuff or does, so is that part of what you did in this project?
Yeah, it is. So in the, in the EIR, it's in the transportation chapter of the EIR at the, at the end of it.
So how much does it cost? How much additional money and time is it to do the LOS stuff, given that that's sort of an add on request that's coming from us?
That's a very difficult question to answer on the spot because it really varies based on the complexity of this, of the transportation network in the vicinity of the project, the number of intersections. But I do see that our transportation planner Dean here has maybe an answer for you. So Dean, take it away.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners, Dean Rizabal with LSA, Principal Transportation Planner. To Matthew's point, it is, it is very difficult to quantify. Most, most cities like Menlo Park do evaluate VMT and LOS. If I had to put a dollar amount to the difference between the two, generally speaking, I'd say it's two thirds LOS and one third VMT for the cost to do that. Again, that's just a really rough estimate. LOS is a pretty technical task to evaluate intersections. Given this project, it was a really large study area, lots of intersections for scenarios. So it is, it is still an item that many cities still evaluate for consistency with the general plan. Cities like Menlo Park do have LOS goals and standards and, and cities still strive to achieve those for their intersections and roadways moving forward, even though VMT is now the focus for Sequo.
Hey, thank you for that explanation. That was comprehensive and I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So on this first one, the EIR, I will vote that it's adequate. I appreciate all the effort and all the back and forth on this and think it sets up the project well. The next two things we have to look at for this project, essentially use permit and architectural control. I think it's a very nice project. We've seen this four times. I think you've been very responsive. I think it does what it can do within the guidance under Connect Menlo, and I'm prepared to support it. On the BMR housing, I really support in the mix and also the approval from our housing commission. Having had joint sessions with our housing commission, I really appreciate their expertise and their guidance on this. And so prepared to support that. I will point out for us that 21 units for a project the size of Menlo flats, if we look at what's coming next in our next housing element, if we have to do more than 3,000 new units, some back of the envelope, what is that? We need to have like 150 projects like this in Menlo Park in order to be able to, at this ratio, meet our floor requirements for affordable housing, let alone what's actually morally responsible for affordable housing. So I'll just flag that these types of ratios are not going to work for us in the future. We have to find a different way to work with developers, to work with the city, to work with how we use land, or we're not going to get there, and that will be our failure. And so that was the fourth one in this mix. And then on the community amenities, I really appreciate your going over the community amenities and how, you know, which ones are used and which parts of the community and the community amenity list. I've appreciated our back and forth as a planning commission. I see the frustration on both sides, wanting to be responsive to community, wanting that list to be updated. But, you know, $4.8 million, you know, the concern that it actually somehow doesn't get used in a timely matter or specifically for the residents that are most impacted. So I'll just say I'll support it. But I really want to urge our city council to utilize the dollars soon and to utilize it for direct benefits for the community members who are most immediately impacted. And thank you for the time, and I think I've answered all five questions for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs was the next to hand up.
Thank you. Before I forget, I would like to follow up on Mr. DeCarty's initial question regarding the EIR and the parking reduction. Again, just to clarify, I think I understand that given that the city of Menlo Park had a specific VMT reduction goal, that when a reduction in the available parking of up to 12% was added in as an alternative, that corresponding efforts that might reduce VMT were reduced because that goal was met. Am I repeating what I heard correctly?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
All right, so I think just going forward, and I'm, I'm not going to press it here and now with the final EIR in front of us, but going forward, and I guess I'm speaking at least for myself, to staff as well as to the consultant on this issue, that it seems to me it would have been an admirable goal to go beyond the VMT goal if we are going to step forward with an additional tool. And I'll just leave it at that. I hope to see that in a future EIR alternative. Beyond that, I would like to simply echo all five points that Mr. DeCarty made so that I don't have to take any, take up anyone else's time. I find the project supportable.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Hi there, Mr. Marcos. I welcome back. Unfortunately, I, this is my first time seeing the object being new and then unfortunately missing the November 15th. So I went back and kind of read through the transcript and had a couple of questions. But before that, I just wanted to say that I, I appreciate the project as handsome looking project. And it seems that many of the things that the planning commissioners have requested before, you've certainly fulfilled. I'm liking the, I'm fine with the BMR plan. I appreciate that they, these units will be indistinguishable from rate units and that there are four bedroom units in the project. I would happily support whatever our housing commission recommended. I do echo Commissioner DeCarty's concern that we're just not going to get where we know with 15. Concern that we're just not going to get where we know with fifteen percent, but that's not your problem at this point. So I have a couple of questions to staff. If I may. So again, back on the community amenities with the in lieu fee. During the November fifteenth meeting, it was my understanding that we were going to go back to the city council or just find out what the next steps were. And my understanding was the next step was to go back into the community to get. Sort of a new list because we have, it seems that we've kind of knocked off all the. Low hanging fruit and there are some other big. Opportunities to be done, like some connecting of of. Of, you know, making sure that everything is connected. To the Bell Haven community and some of them, those bigger those bigger ticket items. So I'm just wondering. I maybe I missed something. Do we have? And maybe Ms. Sandemeyer can answer this question. Do we? What is the process going forward? Because I too would like. To have the projects build something versus add to our pile that I'm not sure when it's going to get spent.
Yes, so on. In June twenty twenty-one, the city council did update the amenity. Community amenities that were available to projects. One of them is now to pay this in lieu fee. And that's a dedicated fee. That would go to the communities affected by. New development. So basically between U S one oh one and San Francisco Bay. Within the city. And then there's also the option of a development agreement and a negotiated. Amenity. So that that list has been updated to include these items.
Okay. I thought we were needed to go back to the community to make sure that we kind of had refreshed our list. Because now I'm not really sure. So if, for instance, let's take the example of the freeway wall. That would cost way more than four point three or four point eight million dollars. How how would that ever that particular project or another expensive project? How how would that then happen? What it would be the process that my understanding that the council is going to go back and kind of figure that out. And do some work back in the community and kind of put. Kind of a process of how these these funds would be spent. Do do we have that yet?
Through the through the chair and Ms. Sandemeyer, if you'd like, I'm happy to respond to Commissioner Harris's question.
Please do.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Harris. So the city council has has not yet made the updates to the list that I think you're referencing and that you were following. Last summer that they were contemplating doing. We are anticipating that that will be coming back to them in the next couple of months. The council does have the discretion to update update the community amenities list at any time to add. Eligible community amenities or. Remove amenities from the list, but they have not yet done that. What they did do as. As the acting principal planner, Ms. Sandemeyer said, is they have added the option to pay an in lieu fee. And the project before us this this evening in the flats is opting to pay that fee. The fee is not specified as a by right fee. In the community amenities ordinances in the municipal code. But our recommendation, because this is a housing development project, is to approve. The in lieu fee if proposed by the applicant for a housing development project.
Thank you. I definitely get that we should move projects along and 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 allow that fee. I just. I just hope that this can become priority, given that it's really unfortunately that we're building all these new developments, and then we're just going to have this pile of money, and I just hope we can see the update to that soon. Thank you. Um, next, I have another question. And at our last meeting, we went over sort of a number of these projects, and we were told that we would be creating a three D model of the area. And I was just wondering if that we could. Get an update on that because I think it would be super helpful as we're approving all of these projects that we can see that and that community members can see it and. And get a better understanding. I mean, we're looking at things like requiring retainer walls along property lines, and I think that would be something that the community would really like to be able to visualize. It's hard to visualize. I'm just wondering. Where we are on that. That sub project of the three D model of the area.
Um, yeah, we're definitely looking into what kind of. Information we can add on the website with with graphics and that sort of thing. I don't believe it would be an actual three D model, but it it would be graphics on the website that would help.
Kind of with. I misunderstood. I must have misunderstood. I thought we were talking about a physical model.
That wasn't my understanding.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll let my other fellow commissioners weigh in either this time or another time on that. My understanding was that it was a. A three D model, which I which I'd love to see. And the final thing is, I again, I'm kind of new to this, and I am just wondering again on the L O S versus the V M T why it just feels like we're spending a lot of. Time, energy, and which equals money on. Evaluating especially so many intersections with L O S, and it seems like given how little stuff like just how. How much staff time we have, if that's really a good use of staff time. Because even the and or consultant dollars. So. I'm just wondering, at what point? Can we just go straight to V M T and not analyze L L O S and and what would that? What would that require?
So I can I can handle part of this question, and I'll just say that. The L O S analysis is still required to. Comply with the city's general plan. There are a couple policies in there that still relate to L O S, and that's why we're doing the analysis right now.
So the city requirement.
Yes, that's correct.
And through the through the chair, I can add to that. It's just to echo what Mr. Whizzle was saying. It is. A connect men low requirement that the city and new projects being added to the city meet certain. Level of service standards. So. Projects that are developing. Are still required to show general plan conformity to do. An L O S analysis and then to. There are conditions of approval that are are proposed for your consideration to tonight. That improve L O S performance to comply with the general plan and and meet those standards that are established in Connect Menlo. So as long as those. Standards in the general plan. Remain in effect, projects will be obligated to. To meet those standards and comply with them.
So in order to make a change to this. Well, I guess we couldn't if it's connect men low because that's sort of done. But if we wanted to make a change to this for the city, would that be a city council thing or is that? We can't change it.
Ultimately, so yeah, it would require a a general plan amendment. Which is something that the planning commission make can make a recommendation on, and ultimately it's a legislative action that the city council has to adopt.
Okay, so the planning commission could make a recommendation to the city council.
So that's something that, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
I guess my next question after you answer. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, is to the chair. How would how would? We go about making such a recommendation?
So I think we would have to put it on the agenda. But I think we could. Ask the city attorney to to draft such an amendment. And possibly. Ask the city staff on your questions with Sandmeyer, whether that's something they can draft internally or whether they need help. But I think we certainly asked to put that on agenda at a future meeting.
Yeah, and I just to to echo that. It's it's not not something that was that's on our agenda tonight or not something that that's related to this project, but as a. A future work item. That's something that that staff can can discuss and discuss with the chair about that. How and when to to bring that forward based on staff resources and council priority.
Okay, well, I don't want to take up more time on this project. So if I wanted to make the request that. We put that on the. Maybe I should do that at the end of the meeting?
We we can't really consider it at tonight's meeting, but I think you can make the request anytime, so.
Okay, then I would like to make. I would. Yes, I would like to request that we consider putting it on the agenda for another time.
Okay, I'll note that.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm sorry I've taken up so much time, but I really appreciate it. Thank you. For humoring me, and I I do appreciate the work that's done on this project. Thanks.
Thank you. So I don't see any other hands at this moment, so I'm going to just run through the recommendations of the staff report myself. I don't have a lot to add on the five items. I think Vice Chair DeCarty expressed them pretty well. I I'm in favor of making these findings and approving. As per the recommendations, but I would like to say with respect to this number five. As a couple other commissioners have said. I have a strong preference for bricks and mortar, community amenities. I just think we get more bang for our buck when something is built as part of the project. It's kind of a golden moment in time, and you can build something. That has a greater value than the appraised value, I I believe. And the in lieu fee certainly is permissible in this case. The city councils approved it. I have no intention of. Derailing this project on this basis. But I just want to express a preference for. This developer for city staff and my fellow commissioners that. I prefer to see. Physical community amenities built as part of every project. I think they're longer lasting and they have more of an impact on our community. You know, really for generations to come. But I am perfectly prepared to make all the findings and prove all the recommendations. Do we have any other commissioners that wish to speak now? I don't have any hands up. Someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, I'd be pleased to move to make the findings for Sequo. Approve the use permit, approve the architectural control. Prove the B M R housing agreement and approve the community amenities proposal per the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Chair DeCarty. So I will call the role now Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Although in favor as well, so. The motion is passed as per Commissioner Riggs' enunciation of it. By a vote of seven in favor to zero opposed. Thank you very much. We'll move to. Close the public hearing at this time. Open a study session, item G one on our agenda. This is a study session on application by Nick Minch Minchell at three thirty-three Ravenswood Avenue, the Parkline Development. This is a request for a study session on a master plan development to comprehensively. Redevelop the S R I campus with the residential office, research and development and retail mixed use project. The proposed project includes requests for a general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment. Rezoning, conditional development permit, C D P. Development agreement, D A, architectural control, vesting tentative map. And below market rate, B M R housing agreement. The project will necessitate the preparation of an environmental impact report, E I R. In compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act sequel. We do have a staff report on this prepared by Ms. Sandmeyer. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have any additions or corrections to the staff report?[1465.83]
Yes, I have a quick presentation.
Okay.
So let's see. Okay, so I could be giving a brief overview of the proposed Parkline project at 333 Ravenswood Avenue. So we have staff update. We received 23 additional emails after the staff report was published. And I think, I believe most of these were posted on the revised agenda that was posted this afternoon. So many of the emails were in favor of additional housing at the project site, including additional below-market-rate housing. Some emails expressed concerns about the proposed project and impacts to nearby residents. And we also received an email from an adjacent church at 201 Ravenswood Avenue with concerns about impacts to the church, especially the location of the playing field. That's part of the proposed project. So the existing project site is the, currently the SRI campus. It's approximately 63 acres in size and contains 38 buildings with about 1.38 million square feet of gross floor area. This shows the project site and vicinity. So as you can see, there's an aerial of the project site here. We have Burgess Park in green. Here's El Camino Real, the Caltrain Station downtown, and the specific plan area, of course. And so, project overview, there's no name increase of non-residential square footage proposed. Approximately 284,000 square feet would be retained in three existing buildings for SRI's continued operation. Approximately 1.1 million new square feet of office R and D uses would be built in five five main structures, and these would be three to five stories in height. There would also be a new office amenity building. The proposed buildings would be developed in a modern architectural style. And there would be three parking structures for the non-residential uses. And so this, she chose the existing development on the site, so the the buildings in yellow are existing and would be removed, and the three in blue are existing, proposed to remain. And as you can see here, this little notch is where the, this is a separate parcel where the church, where existing church is. And then there's Ravenswood here along the top, Middlefield on the right-hand side, Laurel on the left-hand side, and the Burgess right away near the bottom of the sheet. So the project includes 400 residential rental units. These are proposed in a mission architectural style. 15% are proposed as below-market-rate units. There would be 19 townhomes and two, and these would be two stories in height. And they would have attached two car garages. There would also be 381 apartments. These would be in three buildings, three to five stories in height. There would be approximately one parking space per unit. And there would be one-story parking garages with podiums at the second level for private open space for the apartments. The proposed project also includes a sports field and one-story community building adjacent to the Ravenswood Middlefield intersection. The project includes 25 acres of landscape, publicly accessible open space, and new pedestrian and bicycle paths and connections through the site. So this shows the proposed site plan, so the buildings along Laurel here and a little bit along Ravenswood. In yellow, these are the residential buildings, apartment buildings, and then the proposed townhomes near the the Classics Community Development. The buildings in blue are the proposed non-residential buildings. The three gray structures are the non-residential parking structures. The building in pink is the proposed community building. And then next to that is the proposed playing field. For the proposed circulation, the streets would all be private streets internally. There have been internal road to the three main residential buildings and parking garages, and there would be an internal loop road to provide access to all non-residential buildings. Parking garages, surface parking areas, and loading areas, and the loop road would also serve as an emergency access. So this sheet shows a little bit of the circulation. So there's one residential access point from Laurel Street to the townhomes. One to the apartments, and that connects to another entry point at Ravenswood for the apartment buildings. And the non-residential buildings would have separate entry points to along Ravenswood and to along Middlefield, and these would lead to an internal loop road. This loop road doesn't connect to the apartment buildings, but except for emergency access, for emergency access when needed. At the connection to Burgess is also only for emergency access or occasional service vehicles, but it would generally be gated. So a number of entitlements are requested. There would be a new general plan designation, a new zoning district or districts. Applicants requesting a development agreement, a conditional development permit that would include more detailed development standards than zoning district or districts. There would be architectural control for the new buildings. A vesting tentative map to merge the existing lots and create new parcels. And then environmental review that would include the preparation of an environmental impact report. So we put together some key topics for the planning commission. These are proposed land uses and site density and intensity, site layout, including building orientation, site access, conceptual architectural styles, design and layout of open space, parking locations and ratios, and proposed sustainability measures. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Are we going to have a presentation by the applicant as well?
Yes, that will be next.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the Sandmeyer at this time? Vice Chair DeCarty?
Ms. Sandmeyer, will we see this project in the same way we see similarly large development projects? Or is this one going to be unique in some way, in terms of what we see in the sequencing over time?
No, I don't think it'll be unique. It will certainly require a number of public hearings, both at City Council and Planning Commission as the environmental review progresses. It should be similar to what you've seen.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so we can ask the applicant for their presentation.
Thank you. This is John McIntyre, the executive staff of SRI. And on behalf of SRI and our development team at Lane Partners, thank you for the opportunity to present our project here tonight. As you know, SRI has grown up here in Menlo Park, and we will soon be celebrating our 80th anniversary. And we are proud to have been part of the transformation of Silicon Valley, but we're equally excited to look forward, and particularly with adapting our campus to meet the needs of operating in the 21st century. And as we do that, SRI believes it is crucially important that we work closely with the city and with the community to reimagine these 63 acres as a new, open, and modern campus. And that's really why we chose Lane as our partner. Like Lane, SRI, Lane is Menlo Park-based and community-focused in their approach, and our entire team is looking forward to collaborating with all the parties. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Mark Murray, who is the principal at Lane, leading this project. Mark?
Thanks a lot, John, and good evening, members of the Commission, city staff, and Menlo Park residents. I'm Mark Murray with Lane Partners. As John mentioned, we're a Menlo Park-based firm. Our office is actually about a half mile from the SRI campus. My family and I actually live about a half mile down Laurel from the campus as well. So in addition to believing strongly, this is kind of a once-in-a-generation redevelopment opportunity. This is, this is also something that means a lot to me on a personal level as well, that SRI selected us to be their, their development partner. We're really excited to be here this evening, and this is obviously our first study session with this commission. We really look forward to answering your questions, getting your feedback, not just from members of the commission, but from members of the public as well. We've done a lot of community outreach to date, not just meeting with city staff and fire district, but also community groups, lots of one-on-one meetings with dozens of residents. We had a series of open houses last summer, prior to making our initial submittal in the fall. Three of those were open to the public in general. We then had a fourth open house specifically with the Burgess Classics neighborhood. That's the 33 homes on Laurel that actually share a property line with SRI. I think those folks are unique in that way, and we thought they deserve some special attention. And that meeting was really focused on the design, particularly around kind of that buffer zone around that shared property line that I think are unique concerns to that group. And that outreach gave us a lot of, a lot of really great feedback, a lot of construction, constructive feedback that we were able to implement a lot of changes in our project to account for that. And it's really helped, helped guide a lot of, a lot of what we're submitting and talking about this evening. And before turning things over to the Studios Architecture Team about what we are proposing, I kind of wanted to walk this group through just at a high level, you know, what are the guiding principles and guiding goals? So you can kind of understand the whys behind the what, that Tom Yee from Studios will walk you through here momentarily. And one of those goals is really opening up what is currently kind of a void in the center of town. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the existing conditions of the campus, but essentially it's this really large chunk of Menlo Park that has, you know, for the most part, a security fence around it. So, you know, one of the big driving principles is to take down that fence and really open up that, that big area of land to the community in general, that's been closed off for decades. And as, as the name of the project, Parkline indicates, you know, we really envision that new district being characterized by open space. We're planning for 25 acres of publicly available green space. And, you know, while there's a lot of attributes to the project that we want to change, one of the really amazing things that exists today are lots of mature heritage trees. Some species are over 100 years old that are pretty amazing, that a lot of members of the community have never seen. So part of opening up, creating that park-like atmosphere, but really trying to retain a lot of those heritage trees, so people can enjoy that. And I think that's something we've heard a lot of community feedback as well. You know, another big goal for opening up the campus is improving bike and pedestrian transportation through the area. And right now, if you're in Linfield Oaks and you're trying to ride your bike to MA High School in the morning, you know, the campus is really a blockage. You kind of got to circumnavigate to get around. So we really want to take down those fences, you know, create that park-like atmosphere, but then have the site be very permeable with bike and pedestrian arteries through the site in many different ways. So you'll have a very inviting, a very efficient, and very safe way to travel on a bike. So you're also getting, you know, a lot of folks off the road and on to kind of dedicated bike paths through the project. When it comes to the commercial development component, we think we've been very restrained here. We're doing a one-for-one replacement in the form of, you know, the 38 buildings that currently exist today that they currently mentioned in her staff report. SRI is going to consolidate into three of those. Then we're going to demolish the remaining 35, which are older, you know, buildings kind of less useful for research and development purposes. And then consolidate that same square footage into five new state-of-the-art, much more efficient, much more sustainable buildings. And what that allows you to do by consolidating the same square footage into into fewer footprints is you're opening up more, more potent, more of the land to, to open space. And of that 25 acres of green space, we're planning, I think about 10 of that is currently constructed, is building footprint or asphalt. So you're actually generating new green space as well as, as opening up to the public. And then last but not least, you know, housing, particularly affordable housing, is something I think we've heard is, you know, is much or more than, than any other community goal. We share that goal, and obviously there's no housing on the site today, but we're our submittal act, you know, basically takes into account taking the 10 best acres of the project, the 10 acres closest to downtown amenities, closest to transit, and then dedicating that to a new housing district. We're proposing 400 units at various affordability levels, but we're very open to community feedback on what the appropriate amount and types of housing are. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom Yee of Studios, but I look forward to answering your questions and discussing further.
Well, thanks a lot, Mark. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. As Mark said, and members of the Commission and Chair Doran, thank you very much. I'm Thomas Yee, Principal Studios Architecture, and my partner, Mark Finiger, is listening in. Mark did mention the committee outreach that we were all part of last year, and it was a great source of information and a sense of purpose for this project. So that was very helpful to the team. All of us were participants. We submitted several documents the last year and in January to the, to the city of Menlo Park. And those documents are fairly, have some level of detail. We are early in the process. But what we'd like to do today is just summarize some of the key factors that drove, drove the design and the planning of the project. And, and go over that with you so that you can give you a synopsis of where we are. Mark and Corinna did a great job just to give us, give everyone an intro. What we started with, like many architects do, is site analysis and understanding where the site is. If you can see the dash line surrounding the SRI campus, Ravenswood is on the bottom here, north is to the lower left. Middlefield is to the upper left. Laurel is just below, and then you can see the Caltrain Station here in El Camino Real. The dash line you see, circle you see around the side here is basically a 10-minute walk. We've done the walk between the campus and downtown and getting to the Caltrain Station. So a lot of these things were drivers in the plant, as well as the neighborhoods surrounding the site. Linfield Oaks, obviously, the Classics of Burgess Park, as Mark mentioned, is a very key part of our community input. And also acknowledging the Menlo Oaks project to the east, and of course, all the great facilities at the Civic Center and Burgess Park to the west. So again, these were all drivers and information providers in our process. As we got into the project, you know, we, we looked at the existing campus, and this is a kind of a 3D virtual model, a depiction of the campus. You can see, again, Ravenswood on the bottom here. And as Mark said, there are about 38 buildings on the site today, surrounded by a fence, so the site is basically not accessible. A couple of other features are, there's an existing electrical substation near the corner of Ravenswood and Laurel, which we need to take a hard look at. And, and also the three buildings, Buildings P, S, and T, that SRI is planning to retain for its existing campus as they consolidate into those facilities. And our goal was to make them part of the, the master plan effort. And another fact we found in our research of the existing is that the existing parking lots, which you see here in the dark gray, make up about 50% of the entire site area. And, and the building footprints make up another 23%. So over 70% of the site is just hard surface. And again, we're trying to convert that into a more amenable facility, resource for the community. These are just some side pictures around the edge of the site. On the upper left, you can see the substation at the corner of, near Ravenswood, along Laurel. Here's another picture along Laurel. And looking into the site and these various views, here's the church over on the, along Ravenswood corridor. Another thing we tried to be cognizant of was the existing trees. There are about 1,370 existing trees, of which a great percentage are heritage variety. And as we walked the site and analyzed the site, you know, we, we obviously felt that it was very important to be respectful of these trees and incorporate them into the plan. There's, for example, on the upper right here, and the upper left, there's this wonderful grove of oak trees toward the southern part of the site. And so again, making efforts to, to retain those as much as possible. And then you can see the parking lots in the foreground on the lower two pictures. So as we developed our strategy, you know, the trees were, excuse me, the trees were a critical part of our plan, sorry to skip a drawing here. So you can see the existing trees, that they're, they're very plentiful along Ravenswood, to create this wonderful edge along Laurel, of creating a different kind of an edge. And you can see them sprinkled throughout the site, that this was a big driver in our, in our thinking. As we developed the plan, incorporated these analyses points into our thinking, we thought that we would, we would start with the notion of opening up the site. The idea of, of removing the fence, making it accessible to, as a public, accessible, publicly accessible area. The open space idea, starting with the recreational field, the ball field on the Middlefield Ravenswood side, creating this great edge along Ravenswood to connect to downtown, along and east and west toward Menlo Atherton School. A great edge along Laurel to connect the Burgess Classics neighborhood to the north. You can see the three buildings that are P, S, and T that are part of the SRI's revised campus. And then this idea of a commons as the heart of the campus that leads and connects to a new pedestrian linkage, an open space linkage along the south side of the side along the Burgess right away, connections across the street to the west, to the Burgess Park and the Civic Center, and generous connections into the site from Ravenswood. So these were rudiments to the open space plan. With that, we overlaid the pedestrian concepts and the circulation concepts. And we started with pedestrian linkages, which you can see here as, as the dash lines. Again, as Mark said, we want to open up the, the campus to provide throughways for pedestrians through the campus from the southwest corner to the northeast corner to the recreational field, from the northeast corner to the, to the southwest corner. Again, to be able to allow the community to crisscross the site and make this a really resource and connectivity across a very, you know, critical part of the city. In addition to that, you see in yellow here the bicycle paths that are part of the general plan bike, bike plan for, for Menlo Park, and we want to extend that into the site. And so we want to create the, these bicycle paths through the site to allow safe passage for kids and other folks being able to cut across the site diagonally in both directions, and then hooking into the, the city's existing bicycle pathway system, is, was a critical part of our thinking. And in addition to that, you know, the, we have the vehicular pathways which you see in red, and with the utilizing existing entrances on Ravenswood, two on Middlefield, one each on Ravenswood and Laurel for the residential. We're purposely trying to separate vehicular circulation from the residential, separating from the office R and D. We are not intending to have any R and D office traffic go on to Laurel. That was a very important part of, of our thinking. And then also how, how we treat the edges along, along the Burgess Classics neighborhood to the east and to the north was also a critical part. And then lastly, creating a linkage across the south side of the site, pedestrian path along with the bicycle path. So again, creating these wonderful connections across, around, and through the site. This, and as we overlay it one more time, you know, we came to overlaying the trees and how that would influence our planning about the building paths. And so we made concerted efforts to retain as many existing trees, specifically focusing on coastal live oaks and oaks that are heritage variety. We felt those are very critical in our plan. And you can see here, these blue are the building pads for the, for the office R and D, and how some of them are skewed to, again, respect and, and make way for the trees. We decided to place, as Mark said, the residential land uses on the northwest corner of the site, closest to the Caltrain Station, closest to downtown, to again amenitize and create a many proximity to the residential zone. And, and then also the recreational field and how that works with the little community building. And then the parking garages, we located them purposely along the edges of the site to enhance the ability to create this great heart and these great. to enhance the ability to create this great heart and these great connections through the site to the west and to the north and to the northeast. And then finally, we overlay that with the plan of the the current master plan that we're proposing. And you can see how, starting on northeast, or excuse me, northwest, how the residential buildings wrap around from Ravenswood on to Laurel. These are going to be three stories in height along the edge here and then five stories in the back. So from the street, you'll probably never see these taller buildings in the back. But this creates 380 units of housing. We have two rows of townhouses along Laurel. These are purposely placed here as a transition element between the Burgess Neighborhood, the Classics Neighborhood, and the the apartment buildings to the north. We felt because these are two two story in scale, this would be a very compatible way of of linking the site across its west side and and be compatible with the Classics Neighborhood. In addition to that, we're planning these townhomes to be no closer to to the Classics Neighborhood than the current building G on the SRI campus. As you recall, in the existing plan, this area right here, if you can see my cursor to the east of Classics and north is a parking lot. So what we're proposing here is a 50 foot setback here between Classics and our 52 feet, excuse me, that will be landscaped along the north edge and also along the east edge. And we'll consult with the the Classics Neighborhood as to how they might want to use this open space resource. Could be a dog park, could be a passive area, could be an active area. Again, we're transforming this area from a parking lot into something that we think is an amenity, not only for the the neighborhood adjacent to it, but also for the city. You'll also note that the parking garages on this parking garage here is is no closer than the existing building R of the of the SRI campus and no taller. Two stories of parking. We're also cognizant, after the community meeting with that with the Burgess Neighborhood, that they're concerned about noise and headlights. So we're going to look at maybe making this a landscaped solid wall to mitigate those issues and to really make this a very, very compatible neighbor to to the Classics Neighborhood. You can also see that the parking garages on the east side of Flanking and McCandless Project, they're they're purposely sided here, and we took divots out of the parking garage, again, to make way for existing heritage trees, which we're trying to retain on the east side of the site, as well as skewing these two buildings, again, to save more heritage trees on their east side and and make those compatible elements in in the plan. Okay, and moving on, we also took a first pass at looking at the contextual drivers for the design of the of the residential project. And we took our cues from the existing Allied Arts Building in Menlo Park, the Davis Polk Building, Law Office Building, also in Menlo Park, as well as other precedent images from Menlo Park and and other communities in in west in the west side of California, and developed that as an inspirational imagery for our residential design. And the sort of mission style, we studied how those could be applied and and utilized in the design of the of the project, using things like paselles and brise-là-les, balconies that and decks that project out, scaler elements, the mission tile roofs, clearly defining entrances. And so what we'd like to do is take you on a little tour of the site, starting with Laurel, if you're standing on Laurel Street, looking south toward the Linford Oaks Project and and to your right, and this this would be the Civic Center and the Burgess Park. And you can see how the the residential apartment buildings here are three story with these paselle elements. And you can see the harnessing, the existing heritage trees are a very important part of the of the complexion of the of the scale and look and feel of the space. And these three story apartment units with arched openings, balconies, great vertical windows are beginning, again, we're early in the process, but we're beginning to develop this vocabulary. The next view is as if you're standing next to the townhomes to the right here, the apartment buildings to the left, and this great paselle that we're creating as a pedestrian access point into the site from the west across from Burgess Park and the Civic Center. And the next view is as if you're standing on the corner of Ravenswood and Laurel, making your way down Ravenswood toward the east. We're creating this great alternative pathway, which is both pedestrian oriented and also an alternative bicycle pathway to allow people to come off of Ravenswood and use this pathway along our site to get across from from Laurel over to Middlefield. And you can see the apartments on the right peeking out there. And the next view is as if you're walking down Ravenswood toward one of the entrances to the office R and D site. You can see the the entrances are clearly defined. And and we're also going to create signals for the public so so that they can understand that this is a public access, public trail. People are welcome into the site. Another view of the center, this is the commons area of the green, which is the heart of the R and D campus. And you can see these are, again, retention of existing wonderful oak trees and heritage trees, the introduction of both passive and active activities that could be utilized both by tenants and the public, publicly accessible open space. And then finally, a view to the upper right, you see here the the playfield over at Ravenswood and Middlefield on the right. And and again, this is, we feel is a very critical and key community which we heard in our public outreach, that it was that many of the fields at Burgess Park are programmed and and maybe a little bit less accessible sometimes because of weekend activities. This is an alternative. We think the community can really take use and and appreciate as part of their daily, weekly experience living in Menlo Park. So again, as Mark mentioned, you know, these are all part of the vision for the for the project and site and reinforcing all these key elements in addition to our commitment to sustainable design. And so that concludes our our part of the presentation. And we want to thank you, thank the Commission for giving us this opportunity to present the project.
Thank you. I would like to open it up for public comment. If we have any clarifying questions for the Commission, we can do them now. But if not, I want to move to public comment first. So I don't see any hands raised from the Commission. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised from the public for public comment?
Thank you, Chair Doran. Yes, we do have some comments in terms of hands raised at the moment. I'll quickly remind everyone who's tending, as the number of commenters is rising, that if you would like to participate with public comment, please feel free to click the hand icon on your Zoom interface, or if you're calling in by phone, press star nine, and we will assist you in being able to speak momentarily. I'll begin with the first commenter I see on my interface. In terms of commenters, we have Sue Connolly. May I begin letting her share her public comment?
Please do. Yes.
Okay, great. And I'll just move forward. I apologize for the formality, but once one is done, I'll move on to the next. We have quite a few already. So Sue Connolly, thank you for your comment in advance. I'm going to let you speak at this time. If you could please state your name and jurisdiction as you begin your comment. You are now able to unmute yourself.
Great. Can you hear me now? Great. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the the Planning Commission and then also to SRI and Lain Partners for trying to be really thoughtful about this whole process, which I know is a big one. We know that. And but I want to kind of highlight three potential problem areas and some solutions that might be something we put on the table. I live in Burgess Classics, the area that was formerly SRI property that was sold about 21 years ago, and it's a lovely, wonderful community. We're all very close. It's safe, well maintained, everything that you would imagine. And SRI has really been a good neighbor. You know, any challenges that come up, they've addressed things pretty quickly. The chief concern that we have is the sheer size of this project. The, you know, the images that were shown were lovely, but it's just showing the lower elevations of all the buildings. In reality, the 400 apartment, where the 400 units are really five, five story buildings and three five story buildings plus 20 townhomes. So with the offices as well, there are quite a few five story buildings on the inside of the campus, which kudos to the design team for putting the lower elevations closer to the street. But the reality is that there are quite a lot of people that are now going to be on a very small space that really hadn't put much pressure on the infrastructure, the traffic, the water usage, safety and all of that. And in fact, safety is one of our chief concerns because with the SRI property being fenced in for all these years, we've been protected on one side. And we are having some problems already with the shared gate area, the lock gate with with SRI, with, you know, our brothers and sisters who are homeless and are unhoused. And we've been trying for over three years with a persistent problem and try to deal with it humanely and trying to get services and help and been steadily rejected. And there are mental health issues that are scaring children as well. So that the the security of what's going to happen behind our homes and beside our homes, and especially with the increase in burglaries and thefts that are just exploding in all the adjacent towns and even in Menlo Park, it really is a legitimate concern of how can we be protected in this respect. One of the things that we'd like to propose a solution is just reduce the heightened number of office buildings, which is what's really kind of driving this whole housing crisis that we have. So if we have fewer offices, we end up not having as much of a crunch on the housing because we're just perpetuating the problem by building so many high density offices, which, you know, are now cramming people in shoulder to shoulder. So you're getting like a 10x amount of employee increase per floor than there was before. Plus, they're adding a whole bunch more floors. So anyway, so that's, so we're just saying, reduce the scope of the buildings and then spread the housing out. And then it really does start to fit in with the kind of the residential areas around it and putting less pressure in terms of traffic and all the other implications of having a huge office complex. Then with preventing crime.
I'm sorry, you're substantially over your time.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter we have that I'm reading is Kalisha Webster. I'm going to unmute you at this time. And if you could also please provide your name for the record and your jurisdiction as you begin your comment. And you can now unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kalisha Webster, and I'm the Housing Advocate at Housing Choices, a nonprofit service provider helping people with developmental and other disabilities find and retain affordable housing throughout San Mateo County. I'm calling in support of the SRI Parkline redevelopment proposal. But as a city prepares its draft housing element, we will be required to plan for development of around 1,700 units of affordable housing, nearly half of which are very low income. I urge the city to ask the developer to do more to serve people of all income levels and abilities. As many others have noted in their 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 written comments, this site is a deal situated near transit and downtown, making it the perfect location for development of a walkable, likable, and more sustainable community. We encourage the city and developer to take advantage of any opportunities to increase heights and densities at this site through rezoning and density bonuses for including more affordable homes. We also strongly support others' call for a one acre parcel at this site to be donated to at affordable housing developer who can use this land to develop more affordable housing at deeper levels of affordability than what would be achieved under the inclusionary housing ordinance. With a nonprofit developer, these homes would remain affordable in perpetuity, unlike inclusionary units, which are de-restricted for only 55 years. And a nonprofit developer is better able to serve the needs of lower income residents through the provision of more onsite support services. This is especially important for meeting the housing needs of Menlo Park's special needs populations, including people with developmental disabilities as required by the housing element. For a person with a developmental disability, which could affect cognitive and social functioning, supportive services can be as important to housing accessibility as an ADA unit is to someone with a physical disability. People with developmental disabilities also require rents that are deeply affordable, as many rely on disability benefits of around $1,000 per month and so are often pressed out of the moderate, low, and very low income units required under the city's inclusionary ordinance. Inclusion of people with developmental disabilities with coordinated onsite support services funded by the Golden Gate Regional Center in a project like this could affirmatively further for housing for a population that has been historically forced to live with their parents well into adulthood to avoid displacement or homelessness. As of September 2021, 77% of Menlo Park adults with developmental disabilities still lived in the family home, not by choice, but because of the lack of deeply affordable housing available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, I'd like to ask that you put the clock up for the public comments so we can track those.
Yes, sure thing, Chair Doran. I apologize for that. Our next public commenter is someone by the name of Kelly. Kelly, I'll be meeting you shortly, but if you could please provide your first and last name and your jurisdiction, start of your public comment, and I'm unmeeting you at this time.
Hi, this is Kelly Bevor. Can everybody hear me? I'm a former public high school teacher and now a community volunteer. I was really just engaged in what I hope is the future of Menlo Park. And I just feel so optimistic about this development and honestly, really grateful for all of the thought that has gone into it. There are a lot of things that are top of mind for me. I'm a mother of four. And as my children are growing up in the area, you know, the public open space, the better bike and pedestrian routes really resonate with me as I think about my kids moving safely through the community. We live quite close to the development, and it just really resonates with me, how thoughtful they're being about it. Also, just as a a mother and volunteer in our school district, the project's going to generate significant new tax revenue that is going to benefit our elementary and high school districts. And that's really important. I don't want to lose sight of that in these discussions. So I just wanted to really voice my support for the project and thank all the folks involved for being so thoughtful about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder, the next public speaker?
Thank you. Our next public speaker is, I apologize, but I believe the person's name is pronounced Mihael Portnik. Going to let you speak at this time and unmute yourself. You could please provide your name for the record and your jurisdiction as well. And your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mihael Portnik, and I'm in the Allied Arts Neighborhood. So first, like other speakers, I'd like to appreciate SRI and Lain Partners for bringing us this great opportunity and especially being so open to the community feedback and involvement in in the planning processes so far. And, you know, it's always easier to notice the problems and what's lacking, but I actually want to start with what's what I really like. All the open space, the green spaces, all the trees, bike trails, walking paths and everything that's thoughtfully laid out to work well with with the surroundings. You know, on a personal note, I've I've walked to and around Burgess Park hundreds of times in in the last 10 years. So just thinking about what's going to happen here brings me brings me joy. And of course, 100 new, hundreds of new housing units and all within easy walking distance to so many great things. So really, the only thing I I'd like to ask for is that we do more with this opportunity and especially include more housing. Commissioner Dicardi already mentioned earlier today just how great a need we have and and a great moral and legal obligation to to provide more housing for for our community. And as the first speaker noted, you know, homelessness is unfortunately a reality for a lot of people in Menlo Park already. I made more specific suggestions in in my letter to the Planning Commission. So I'll save you time and we'll repeat them here, but it's it's in the in the packet. And the second thing I'd like to share is just, you know, the last session of this commission, there was an update on all the development in Bay Shore and really was eye opening to me just how much new development is taking place and how quickly it's all happening there. really was eye-opening to me just how much new development is taking place and how quickly it's all happening there. You know, it's not just hundreds, it's thousands of new housing units and massive new office buildings. They're about to go up. And as a, you know, resident of Allied Arts who was indirectly impacted by any of it, I was sad to notice how easy it was for me personally to not really want to think about it much. But as I listened to a public comment from a local resident about how difficult the traffic situation is already there and asking everyone to imagine how much worse it's going to get with all the construction. It really made me think, you know, how different the conversation would be if, if this was all happening in, in this neighborhood. So as we're discussing, you know, the development here tonight, I hope we're not tempted to apply a double standard for what's acceptable here versus what's acceptable in other parts of town and whatever we think the appropriate density and height and traffic and all our elsewhere in Menlo Park was make sure we apply the same standards in Parkline as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Zara. If you could please provide your full name and your jurisdiction at the beginning of your public comment, I will allow you to unmute yourself at this time. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Anna Zara. I live in the Lynnfield Oaks neighborhood of Menlo Park. I'm speaking in support of the Parkline project proposed for the SRI campus. The location is ideal for good opportunities for community participation of the project residence because of its proximity to transportation, shopping, entertainment and recreation. I'm also in support of creating higher-density apartment buildings as part of Parkline so that more of those apartments can be made available to people with intellectual, developmental and physical challenges. Many in these vulnerable population, many in this vulnerable population of our town are forced to relocate away from family, friends and familiar surroundings because of the lack of affordable housing. My comment is brief and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Verlai Ayde. I apologize. I'm allowing you to speak at this time. If you could please provide your name for the record and your jurisdiction, you may now speak.
Hi, yeah, my name is Viral Abbey. I live in Lynnfield Oaks. And I went to one of the community outreach sessions last summer, which was a good informational session. I have just a couple of brief comments and I know maybe a little early, but I think particularly for those of us who live on Laurel Street, that the traffic impact of this project in conjunction with the projects that are going to be occupied shortly on El Camino, the Stanford project and then the other project further north on El Camino could put quite a few additional cars on Laurel because it's a commonly used cut through. So as part of that, two things, one, I think when you get to the point in the environmental impact analysis, you need to analyze the traffic impact in conjunction with the future grade separation project, which I'm sure will happen someday. And one of the grade separate, or some of the grade separation options include cutting off Alma, which would put quite a big increase of, in traffic pressure on Laurel Street. We don't know, you know, what option will be selected in the future. So I think getting to my point, I think that we, something we discussed at the community meeting in the summer is that there should be no car access from the project, even from the residential part onto Laurel, that the access should all be on to Ravenswood and Middlefield, which are much larger streets and can more easily accommodate the traffic. So that's something I think that should be looked at quite carefully. Then the other thing goes back, you know, 15, 20 years ago and may not be the case anymore, but I know in the past SRI maintained a blockhouse with very toxic gases and chemicals that were used for some of the semiconductor work on campus. I don't know if that's the case today, but I think that if it is the case, that really is not consistent with the density of housing that's proposed on this project. And you didn't specify which buildings were being eliminated, but I know the blockhouse that had that material was you know, past the end of Burgess, but in that part of campus, close to one of the buildings that's being saved. So I know John, I don't have his last name, the SRI person on the call probably knows if that work is no longer taking place on campus, but I think that needs to be considered and eliminated as a use on campus if, as this project goes forward. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public commenter is someone named Bob McDonald. I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the beginning of your public comment. You may now unmute yourself. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, planning staff. Good evening, fellow Menlo Park residents. I'm Bob McDonald. I'm Chair of the Ad Hoc Church Committee for the Parkline Project for the Menlo Park Christian Science Church on Ravenswood. I'm also a Menlo Park citizen and live over near Hillview. On behalf of all of my fellow Menlo Park church members who are attending this evening, I would like to briefly highlight the message I sent to Acting Principal Planner Sandmeyer earlier today. Our church has been a neighbor and a partner with SRI for over 60 years. In the late 1950s, our church did a land swap with SRI that led to the location of our current church property, which is surrounded on three sides by SRI. At that time, a perpetual parking agreement was put in place between our church and SRI that provides parking for services, meetings and events at our church on SRI property, as well as some mutual traffic flow easements that ensure traffic flow and emergency vehicle access around the perimeter of our property, as well as the ability to exit out onto Middlefield. We are in support of the efforts of SRI and the Parkline team to improve the use of SRI 63 acres in the heart of Menlo Park. However, we have identified a significant issue for our church in the proposed plan. We have made the Parkline team aware that our church membership would like the proposed playing field move so it would not be adjacent to our property. Relocating the playing field is the most bulletproof way to ensure the sanctity and serenity of all religious services, meetings and events on our property, both now and perpetually into the future. We are comfortable with continuing to have parking lots, parking structures, office buildings adjacent to our property as part of the Parkline project. That will create a buffer similar to what we have enjoyed for over 60 years. In addition to our position regarding the playing field location, our church would also like to make it known that two of the three existing mutual traffic flow easements, Ravenswood 1 and Ravenswood 2, need to remain in place to ensure that emergency vehicles can get to any location around the periphery of our property. The church would also like to reach a mutually acceptable agreement regarding the middlefield connection. Thank you, commissioners, for giving our church membership this opportunity to bring these issues to your attention as public hearings regarding the Parkline proposal get underway. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is someone by the name of Aaron Ho. I'm going to allow you to speak at this time and unmute yourself. If you please provide your name and jurisdiction for the public record. Thank you very much.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. Hi, I'm actually Alex Ho and I live in the Burgess Classics adjacent to the SRI property. I think it's great that the L.A. Partners are planning to redevelop and improve the SRI property and help solve our city's housing shortfall. The developers have certainly incorporated lots of input from the neighbors. I'm a bit concerned about two issues that I'm hoping can be addressed. First of all, is the ingress from Burgess Drive. During the presentation earlier, it was specified as a locked gate, but I was wondering what assurances that we have that will remain so in the future. The entry would drive additional commute traffic through the Lynnfield Oaks residential neighborhood and more importantly, along Laurel Street, which is of, which is of course the Peninsula Bicycle Corridor. And it's also used by lots of kids going back and forth to Ensnail School. So as a bunch of the previous commenters have said, it's really important that we look at the traffic flows along Laurel. Secondly, there's quite a bit of green space throughout the property. And as the developers have mentioned, the space is being converted from a closed campus to an open property. And I was just wondering what can be done to ensure that unhoused people don't start camping along the bike path and behind the Burgess Classics projects, adjoining homes. Now, I wish I was exaggerating, but we already have an existing issue with people sleeping in the sidewalks back there. We also have a history of shopping carts and garbage being left in the neighborhood. And if you haven't been to SRI's back fence, it functions as a homeless laundry every weekend, like yesterday, actually. Unfortunately, SRI hasn't been willing to address these issues. We just started Little League across the street at Burgess Park a few weeks ago. And you've been, if you've been to the snack shack there adjacent to the Majors Park or to the rear door of the Burgess Ariaga gymnasium, you'll know that we have a serious existing homeless problem with basically garbage all over the place. And so I'd like the developers to address the possibility of, you know, similar trash being transferred from Burgess Park over to their new development. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is someone named Emily Simonson. I will be allowing you to speak at this time. You can unmute yourself and please state your name and jurisdiction at the beginning of your public comment. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Simonson. I live in Central Menlo, actually on Laurel Street, just a few blocks from the SRI campus. I'm a lifetime resident of Menlo Park and I just wanted to speak briefly to voice my support for the project. I, I'd like to thank everyone involved for their thoughtful planning of the, the project. I think it sounds great. In particular, the additional housing that would be added near downtown, which I think is really important. And also especially the addition of better and safer ways to commute by bike and walk. I'm a mother of three young children. And I think that is something that is lacking in this area and and I also really appreciate the addition of green space, which is, I think, is a rare opportunity in this day and age to create more green space while also creating more housing in a safe place for the community. So as I said, this was a brief comment, but I just wanted to voice my support and thank you for everyone involved.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is someone named Ken Chan. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself at this time. If you could please state your name and your jurisdiction at the beginning of your public comment. It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hello, members of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. My name is Ken Chan and I'm an organizer with a nonprofit called the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and the leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes, which is why I'm here tonight. On behalf of you, you'll see, I'd first like to thank both SRI and my partners for putting forth this proposal and bringing us all together to hear and talk about it. I'd like to say that while these 400 proposed homes on the site would be beneficial to addressing the jobs, housing imbalance that we're all collectively facing, there's still so much more that can be done. We'd like to see a site that's both viable and improved with gap funding set aside for affordable homes. In addition, I'd like to highlight that partnership with both L.A. Partners, the Land Order, SRI, and the city with a affordable housing developer will provide the highest number of affordable homes at the deepest levels of affordability, which would include services and support that residents here in Menlo Park need to thrive. We are essentially, or we are especially interested in after-school care, computer labs, playgrounds and other amenities that, that, and that a potential affordable housing developer would, sorry, and other amenities that affordable housing developers have the experience in providing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next commenter is Adina Levin. I'm going to let you unmute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction to start your comment. Thank you very much.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Adina Levin. I am a Menlo Park resident. I live near downtown. I serve on the Complete Street Commission, but I am speaking for myself. And, you know, as someone who chooses to live near downtown, you know, because it is walking distance from grocery stores and you know, drug, drugstore, hardware store and nearby the train station and the buses and so on, having central locations that are really full of amenities is really a fantastic place for more housing. And this development complements that with really wonderful paths and green space for people to both enjoy and be able to get to and fro without really having to use cars for lots of the short local needs as well as potentially near jobs as well. And so with this is really such a wonderful place near amenities. I was contrasting that with the previous project that the planning commissioner considered this evening, which has buildings that are taller and higher density. And there was a lot of wrestling with how to get, you know, amenities into the area. Here we have the area and an area that is already has plentiful amenities. This is a fine place to have more homes. Particularly, I don't know whether it was sent to the planning commission, but there was a letter that was recently sent to city council observing that, you know, as the city's going through the housing element process, that the Southern California cities that are ahead of us in the process have been facing their housing elements being rejected due to sites that are not viable and also lack of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And that letter pointed out how Menlo Park is really at risk of, you know, a similar situation. And we may need to, from the state, find sites that are really good to have more homes, including affordable homes. And so with that, I'd really like to add my voice to the others who've talked about the opportunity to have additional homes as particularly deeply affordable homes to be able to accommodate our housing needs and address our housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Karen Grove and I'm going to let you speak at this time. If you could please, when you unmute yourself, provide your name and jurisdiction at the start of your comment. Thank you.
Good evening. This is Karen Grove. I am a member of the Housing Commission, but I am speaking tonight as myself. I'm speaking in support of this project for a lot of the reasons people have said, I love the biking and walking paths. I love, love, love the preservation of the beautiful trees and the housing. And I agree with others who are saying we can do more and I hope we do more for housing. I'm really glad that we were able to hear from Housing Choices today. As I attached to my letter to you, Housing Choices provided some data to our city about the number of people in Menlo Park. I think it's 167 who are living with, that they know of, that they serve with their developmental disability services. And many of them are living with adult parents and when their adult parents can no longer support them, maybe they pass on. Those are people who live on $1,000 a year and the number one cause of homelessness is a lack of affordable housing for people who have extremely low incomes. So there's been a lot of concern about the visibility of people, unhoused residents. The best thing we can do about that is to give them homes. So I really, really support donating land to an affordable housing provider to partner with because they can build a lot of affordable homes that meet the needs of our most vulnerable residents and give them wraparound services. I want to echo Adina's comment about our housing element. We may actually really, really depend on 100% affordable housing everywhere we can possibly put it. And this is such a great site for it. We could really create a model of partnership at this site. And finally, I want to say that I was knocking on people's doors who are neighbors to this property on this past week and on Saturday. And almost unanimously, people were enthusiastically in support of more homes, more inclusionary below-market rate homes and more extremely low-income homes through the dedication of land and partnership with a nonprofit provider. One woman initially was a little concerned about so many new people. Where are they all going to go to dinner and things like that? One woman initially was a little concerned about so many new people. Where are they all going to go to dinner and things like that? And then she thought of her friend Roberta, who would, she would really like to be able to live here, but Roberta's on a fixed income as a senior citizen and can't afford it. She actually was considering showing up with a hammer and nails to move things along so Roberta can move in as soon as possible. Another person was a teacher with young children, very enthusiastic. Another person works in public health and grabbed the clipboard out of my hands because she understands the link between health and housing. So just the voices of people who are very busy and can't make it here tonight, but signed on to the letter that Menlo Together sent in and who also support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Brittany Baxter. I'm going to let you unmute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction for your comment. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Brittany Baxter. I'm a District Three resident. I also live within walking distance of this project and walk by it really often. I love the idea of opening up the site. And like others mentioned, I also love living in this neighborhood because it's so walkable and fantastic. And I would love for more people to have that opportunity as well. I really share the enthusiasm here for the future of this project and what it means for our city. It is really a once in a generation opportunity. And I think it's also an opportunity to really skate to where the puck is going for the future of what these places are within our community. You know, so much of what I've heard tonight, both for this project and for others, has been around concerns about traffic and parking. And this site is so perfectly set up where you actually don't really need a car to get around. That's something I really enjoy about the neighborhood. And I think it was Commissioner DeCarty earlier who mentioned that, you know, the availability of parking, the ease of getting around with the car can really be a factor for people who do have that choice, whether to drive, whether to take transit, use other methods of transportation. And so anything we could do to help set up this site with, you know, the right things in place to help encourage people to choose more sustainable, eco-friendly, you know, congestion reducing methods of transit would be fantastic. Especially with space that's such a premium too. I think it would be such a great opportunity to take some of that available space and use it for homes and for people and not just for car storage. The other thing I wanted to just echo again to is Kalisha Webster's comment from earlier. I think there's a really great opportunity here, given the scale of the site, to again, to think ahead, build something really fantastic for the community, think about everybody who's here in the community, and help to create that really much needed, difficult to create affordable housing, especially for populations that have specific needs. And, you know, just in general, the more that we can do here with the available space will really help to tackle our housing crisis. Definitely the best solution to reducing homelessness is to get people into homes. And I do see a difference here too, between, you know, this project and others that are more at the Bay Shore, where I think I saw in the staff report, the density here is about 40 units per acre. And I believe out by the Bay Shore, it's closer to 100. And the site, again, such an opportunity. It's right by downtown, right by transit, so many amenities. It would be great to try to do a little bit more to get some of those much needed homes here at the site. Thank you so much again for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Lynn Bramlett. At this time, I'll be allowing you to unmute yourself. If you could please provide your name and your jurisdiction at the start of your comment. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Bramlett, Menlo Park District Three resident, living on Mills Court. I'm speaking for myself, although I also lead the disaster preparedness organization MPC Ready, which focuses on Menlo Park and the unincorporated county islands within or adjacent to Menlo Park. Our focus is disaster-prepared neighborhoods. And these are based on research showing that in a disaster, our most immediate source of help will be the neighbors living closest to us. Emergency response personnel will be overwhelmed and there won't be nearly enough to go around. Unfortunately, there are serious gaps in our local government's preparedness for disasters. I am doing what I can to get this matter discussed and hopefully addressed, but progress is slow. I have two key points tonight. First, development projects represent an opportunity to significantly improve our disaster preparedness through the community amenity process. I agree with Sue Connolly's suggestion about the idea of putting underground water cisterns in new development. Because of their soils, District One and Two are not candidates for underground water storage. District One lies in a flood zone and a liquefaction zone. Flood Park is also in a liquefaction zone. Thus, the SRI project represents the most likely near-term project that could include an underground water cistern as a community amenity. Water storage is critically important. Our city has less than a day's worth of stored water for emergency medical drinking. Very few people have personal supplies of stored water. It's also essential for firefighting. Earthquakes, fires are a typical secondary consequence of earthquakes. I think most of you realize our area's water comes from the Hatch Hatchie reservoir that was completed in 1934. It's a 167 mile gravity-driven network getting here. It's at risk of damage in a major earthquake. And the earthquake that experts predict will erupt next is the Hayward Fault. And yes, it crosses the Hayward Fault. So it's quite a serious matter because our local fire district also has very little water stored. And when that fault erupts, and it has erupted like clockwork every 150, 160 years, 12 times at a major wave. So this is a serious predicted disaster looming and water would be very important. So I consider water storage to be far more important than a juice bar or a sports field. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is calling by phone and their phone number ends in the digits 9040. I'm going to allow you to unmute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the start of your comment. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rob Wellington and my family and I are Menlo Park residents. I just wanted to express our support for this project. The SRI campus is a large area of land that's currently very underutilized. And I think redeveloping this into a new neighborhood with open space and new housing is a great idea and should be encouraged. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Steve Pang. I'll be allowing you to unmute yourself. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the start of your comment. Thank you.
Hi, this is Steve Pang. My house is in Classics Community, right at Burgess Park. So I support the comments of Sue Connolly and Alex Ho. And I want to base my comments based, not on just, say, hypothetical problems that may arise with the project, but based on real life things that we see day to day at Burgess Park. So first, the first thing I would say, I actually oppose the open space concept of SRI facility because there seems to be too many places where, if I were a homeless person, I would like to camp out. And repeatedly over the past three years, we've been trying to work with SRI to handle the the unhoused problem within their back gate and nothing's been done. No permanent solution has been afforded. And, you know, our children nowadays, it's, we used to be able to bike around and walk around the neighborhood. Now it feels unsafe. I also oppose the bike path cut through from Middlefield to Laurel, as shown in the, in the plan, for substantially the same reason. It might seem theoretically a good idea for families, childrens, and workers to take a shortcut through that route, but once that gets, say, once homeless people find one or two places to camp out, I submit that it's not going to be considered a safe place for children or the public to, to go through at nighttime or early in the morning and things like that. Lastly, I also oppose the, the number and the location of housing units on the property for some practical reasons. As another resident, another commenter Verl mentioned, there's a potentially, potential for a lot of traffic, additional traffic on Laurel Street. As you know, Laurel right now already has traffic calming measures with the addition of speed bumps to try to reduce cut through traffic from Willow Road to Ravenswood. But with the main entrance and egress of the residential housing to be right on Laurel, that's going to be, become a major factor and a real problem for all the people in the neighborhood. Again, it's from living there, you know, I know that families, children, bicycles, and walk back and forth to the park and to have, you know, quite a bit of additional traffic on that Laurel Street would become very dangerous for all the children. So thank you. By the way, is there further comments written in my written submission? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just as an announcement, we have about six commenters left currently for everyone's update. So I'll go on and proceed. The next commenter is Frank Contreras. I'm going to let you unmute yourself. If you could please provide your name, jurisdiction at the start of your comment. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, planning commission, Parkline and SRI. Thank you guys for holding this meeting. I've been, I am, my name is Frank Contreras. My family and I have been in Menlo Park for almost 40 years. And as somebody who would like to stay in the area, like I totally agree with these projects and the BMR aspect of it, just because A, I am outpriced and B, like I would love for my family to stay in the area. So as somebody who, I, just the, the area, the family-oriented community that we have developed here, over the course of my time that I've been here, has been like, it is very, I don't want to say envious, but people take notice when they come from out of town to our community in Menlo Park. And so me personally, as someone who has grown up here, went to Melatherton, I went to Fido College, I went to San Jose State, and I can't imagine, like, I can only see, like, there are a lot of positives with this project at SRI, obviously with Susan Connolly and our other previous our other previous participants, they have voiced their opinions with homelessness, which I totally agree because I ride my bike from time to time. I ride my bike probably 80% of the time in Menlo Park because I work at Stanford Hospital or Stanford Healthcare. And one thing that I did notice is over there by Alma, there are a lot of, not as much as there were before, but there are homeless encampments. And I feel like we do need to address that aspect of it. The traffic obviously is going to be probably addressed in the EIR or the Environmental Impact Report. They'll eventually come out or that will be, or it's being formulated as we speak. But the issues about providing housing for the disabled, like I, I agree with that notion as well. I feel like everybody should have the opportunity to live in Menlo Park, especially like those of, I think everybody should be able to be afforded the opportunity to live in Menlo Park because, I mean, this is such a great area, like, like I said, I've been here for 39 years of my life. Or yeah, because I'm about to hit 40 in December. So what I love people to be here and enjoy themselves, yes. Are there issues that we could be, that could also be addressed? Of course. But in the course of time, like I hope that they can all be afforded that, you know, the, 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 the issues that, that are at hand or the, you know, the homelessness, the, the housing for, you know, the disabled and everybody else, like, I hope and pray that we could all just, you know, come together, get it all going and see if we could have any solutions to these, to these issues. So thank you very much, guys. I got to get ready for work. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Will Connors. I'm going to let you unmute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the start of your comment. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name's Will Connors and I'm a longtime resident of the Willows. I strongly support this project and urge you to move it forward. In particular, the bike and pedestrian access to schools in downtown, I think, is critical infrastructure. My one critique really relates to the 20 or so townhomes on Laurel. I think the community needs more housing. And I personally would really like to see more density in that area, more similar to the other residential buildings in the plan. Call it, you know, the three to five stories. I just think it's a better use of space near transit. Thank you.
For your comment. Our next commenter is Susan Stimson. I'm going to let you unmute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the start of your comment. It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you all for soliciting community input. And that's both to the city council and the Parklane Development and SRI. I am Susan Stimson. I live in Linfield Oaks. I've been to some of the community input sessions. I was really pleased to see some of what was recommended incorporated. And I just have three comments. One, I really appreciate the consideration of a closed wall of the parking structure. I know it was mentioned as it would be, it is being considered, and I encourage commitment to that option in order to preserve privacy and, and certainly of, you know, headlights at night as well as noise. And SRI has been a really good neighbor related to that at, you know, evenings and throughout the night and would appreciate that being committed to in the future. Two, I just, I think it's been mentioned, but, you know, wanted to ask how the the areas surrounding the neighbors or with throughout the green space, how the security will be maintained, whether that's through, you know, private security or the police force, but, but certainly, you know, that's, that's a need to, and a continual need for, for any growing downtown to, to ensure safety and the ability to use that space at night. And then finally, just wanted to comment on the overall distribution of housing, which as Ben mentioned here too, is really centered on a couple primary neighborhoods. And one, of course, is Bell Haven. And, and the other is really this area in and around El Camino Real in downtown. And while both offer benefits such as adjacency to the highways for Bell Haven and of course Caltrain and El Camino Real for, for this neighborhood, the contrast in proposed housing to other neighborhoods is stark. In this situation, it doesn't completely come out in the data because these neighborhoods are considered separate and distinct, albeit, you know, it's a stone's throw to other large housing developments that are currently in process of being built and have added a tremendous amount of good and needed housing. What I worry about is that the impacts on our resources as well as traffic of those other projects haven't yet been realized. And so when the, when their analysis is done for the impacts of this neighborhood, it's really I think it's really important to allow time for the neighborhood to digest, if you will, those other very large and again, important housing developments in order to help dictate what considerations need to be made with this development. And that, you know, again, I know they're two, per the plan, very separate neighborhoods. But in reality, they're all feeding, you know, out to the same highway arteries in many cases and elsewhere. And I think should be considered before adding another very large development to that same area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Kenneth Ma. You will be allowed to unmute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the start of your comment. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Ma. My wife, three-year-old daughter and I, we recently bought a home in the Burgess Classics neighborhood. Specifically, we live directly on Laurel Street. We love the area. And literally Laurel Street itself, we actually lived on an apartment just on the other side of Ravenswood on Laurel Street across from Trinity Church for over five years. We generally are in support of the Parkline project, especially the green space and pedestrian bike paths. And as a young family that's progressed from living in an apartment and now a home on Laurel Street, affordable housing. It wasn't long ago that ourselves, we were students, young professionals, about to get married and start our family. Our respectful request of the planning commission is to thoroughly consider the impact of the development and specifically housing density, as other speakers have proposed, higher density on the living, walking, and biking feasibility. Feasibility on Laurel Street and safe usage of Burgess Park, the library and all its other amenities. For example, in our apartment, we biked to and from Stanford for five plus years and it was already dangerous at the Laurel and Ravenswood intersection. There's no protected bike lane or box at the intersection and we'd often be cut off and blocked by cars and have to wait in line with them to cross Ravenswood. The current plans with ingress and egress to the apartments and townhomes on Laurel Street will only likely worsen this safety issue. Also in support of previous speakers, traffic in general on Laurel Street will be increased by the Parkline project, which is already used as a shortcut through a fair. Unfortunately, even now, my wife and I aren't comfortable letting our daughter play or even really walk in front of our house by herself due to the traffic. And how fast the cars travel in front of Laurel Street. Additional townhomes and apartments with egress and ingress less than a hundred yards away from our home will only worsen this. The current designs may actually ironically decrease safety of those, not just in our neighborhood, but of the Parkline project, those residents trying to cross Laurel. To access Burgess Park. We would ask the commission to consider mitigating the impact to Laurel Street by considering ingress and egress to be exclusively on Ravenswood and Middlefield. These roads are already thoroughfares and designed to handle high traffic. And while I'm not an architect, the plans appear easily amenable to adjusting the parkline roads to afford the safer proposal to have cars enter and exit on streets other than Laurel. In fact, the other designs, uh, did not even have these and those housing roads connected to the internal loop of SRI. Just as we are suggesting. Finally, we stand in support of all the other issues that our neighbors in the Burgess Classics neighborhood have verbalized, including gate access on Burgess Drive. Ensuring intended use of the green space and concerns about how safety and security will be ensured. They have many more years, if not decades, of living here, much more than us, and know those current and future issues intimately. Thank you for your time and consideration. My wife, daughter and I appreciate your service to our city and hope that you consider our request. And concerns about how traffic and safety on Laurel Street will be impacted by the current parkline design with egress and ingress on Laurel Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Katie Beruzzi. I'm going to let you, uh, be able to unmute yourself. If you could please provide your name and your jurisdiction at the start of your comment, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Beruzzi. I live in Melo Park. I actually lived on Waverly Street in Linfield Oaks for twelve years. I serve on the Complete Streets Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. I want to echo a lot of things other people have said, um, and not belabor the points, um, but I feel like this project addresses three big needs in our community. One actually is a direct response to increased density. We need better bike and ped connectivity. So it's fantastic to see, um, all of the different bike and ped paths through the project. It's great to open up the connections for cyclists and pedestrians, um, between Middlefield and Laurel. And I want to remind people that we're also planning on opening up the connection under the train tracks. So that people can actually bike theoretically from, you know, Middlefield Road to Safeway in almost a straight line, which is a fantastic thing. In general, as we add density, we need to keep working on those kinds of things. This is also offering open space. I feel like it was just a few months ago, we were talking about trying to save the parks. So here, here's some park space. Um, and, and I think, um, yeah, I mean, right now we have a housing crisis. Um, and so we do have a lot of homeless people. Um, I, I was actually living in Linfield Oaks. In twenty twelve, when we were trying to figure out where to put a homeless shelter and residents in the area definitely didn't want a homeless shelter there. But I think the result is when you don't have a homeless shelter, you have people still sleeping on benches. So I hope we can do better in the future. In general, this is a great area location, um, for denser housing. Um, it's close to so many amenities. And we walked and biked everywhere, you know, all the train stations and the restaurants. The one place that never occurred to me to walk to when I was living there was City Hall, I think when I was just renting. And near wheeling my toddler around, it never occurred to me to show up at a council meeting. But I think the fact that people in that phase of life aren't, aren't showing up at council doesn't mean they don't exist and we shouldn't be considering their needs as well. So, uh, more housing, um, would be great. Keep the openness, um, also maybe ensure that we have safe crossings at Middlefield. I feel like when I was looking at the map, I wanted to see something better at the Vintage Oaks intersection. That's a super micro detail. But I think you're going to see more people trying to get across there and that would be a good thing to do. And I'll say as a member of the Trinity Church community, um, we've also had a sharing, a parking sharing arrangement with SRI. But we're also joyfully anticipating the idea of a lot of new potential parishioners. And members of the community who want to attend some of the social programs that we offer. So I think net-net, we're going to be in good shape. Thank you so much for all the thought you've put into this. And I wish that we put this much thought into all of the developments in our community. Um, and I hope this can be a model going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is someone by the name of Peter. Peter, you'll be able to mute yourself at this time. If you could please provide your full name, your jurisdiction and start of the comment, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Planning Commission and, um. You know, I had a chance to meet with Mark Murray and the partners and they were very gracious in soliciting the opinions of the community. I'm a resident of Classic Expert, um, community. You know, I, I love this community. I love the, the quiet nature of the streets, but I really want to emphasize three things. One is traffic. Ravenswood is a single-lane road each in each direction. And one of the things that's not really emphasized is that while there's, uh, one known square feet replacement of the existing square footage. Those are primarily unoccupied buildings with lower employment density. So what we're, what we're really doing is aggregating further traffic. Now, I, I understand the vision of the developer and provide an open space. But with that comes consequences. And while the connectivity that they, they're trying to bring to the ingress egress. Makes sense, but it doesn't really address really the safety issues. I mean, along that ingress egress along Burgess. It's a, it's a quiet lane and safety begins with having eyes on the street. We, we have dedicated bike lanes already along Linfield. Drive and Ravensville, uh, Ravenswood. So, you know, I vehemently disagree with having the ingress egress along Burgess. In addition to that, I want to make sure that we don't provide programming activities directly behind our backyards. Between our, our community and the parking structure, I think. You know, it encourages homeless encampments and we talked about the safety. I actually, some of, uh, my many neighborhoods, um, concerns about safety and some unhoused people in the vicinity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, this time we have currently two more commenters. Uh, so the next one is named Gail Gordon. You'll be able to speak at this time. If you could please provide your name and jurisdiction at the beginning of your comment, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Gordon. I live in the Burgess Classics. I appreciate the Planning Commission, Lake Partners and SRI's willingness to listen to the community. And for the thoughtful work Lane and the architects have done to develop Parkline. In, in general, I support the project. That said, I ask the commission to be sensitive to the fact Parkline is a huge residential development. That is being dropped into a mixed residential area that ranges from single-family to apartment buildings. However, all these residential buildings are only two-story. Also, there will be a huge impact on traffic, which has been mentioned several times this evening. Laurel, Ravenswood and Middlefield are all two-lane roads that are already heavily congested. We have a lot of traffic on Laurel with Burgess, the use of the fields, the use of the pools. A lot of kids, um, get dropped off. There's a lot of traffic coming in and out of those two inlets there at the parking lots. And, um, we see a lot of almost near misses on the bike lines there, lanes. We also need to consider how our schools will absorb the additional population. And then there are, are natural resources to consider. I didn't hear anything about the building's use of solar panels, reusable energy, et cetera. I appreciate the inclusion of a field at Parklane as the fields at Burgess are already maxed out. I'm curious to know what are the details with the use of the field? Is this something that the city's park and rec will have a contract with? How is it going to be regulated? And I didn't happen to notice if there was any, uh, I didn't happen to notice any parking, uh, for that field. And bottom line, I'd rather see affordable homes that people could actually purchase, uh, that would be built on the SRI site, but. I know that's not going to happen. But second to that, I agree, it's important to provide affordable rental housing within this project. I'd ideally like to see the number of affordable units remain the same and the overall number of housing units be decreased. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And, uh, what appears to be our final public commenter. This person has the name of Brooke C. If you could please provide your full name and your jurisdiction at the start of your public comment. It'd be greatly appreciated. Uh, you may now unmute yourself.
We lost the speaker?
I noticed that their hand is raised still and I've given them permission to speak. I'll, I'll try and change that again. Um, I apologize. Does not appear that. This person's able to unmute themselves. So I, I'm not sure if they can communicate with us at this time.
Okay, um, well, if we don't have any other hands raised this time, I'm going to close public comment. I think people have had enough notice to get their hand up. So I'm closing public comment. I would like to bring it back to the commission. This is the first time we've seen this proposal, so I'm sure the commission's going to have a lot to say about it. Uh, but I also want to note that it's ten twenty-four. We need to conclude this meeting by eleven o'clock unless we take a vote to extend it further. I suspect it's be very challenging to conclude this by eleven o'clock, but I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners to maybe give it a try. Uh, since we will have multiple opportunities to see this project before anything, uh, gets approved. Um, I'm going to kick off with my own reactions to the proposal and the. The matters that the, uh, staff has asked us to comment on. So the members of Planning Commission review where they ask for. Our views, uh, we have a list of bullets. The first is proposed land uses and side density and intensity. Overall, I think this is a great project. I think it's very thoughtful. And I think the land use is appropriate. Uh, I like the residential uses closest to the train station. Uh, I like the playing field close to MA, uh, because. There's not a lot of parkland around MA. There is a lot at the other end of the site next to Burgess. So I think that's appropriate. I would like to comment on the density. As part of this application, there's a request for zoning ordinance and a rezoning. So I think we, there's, everything's on the table, basically. Very large site, we've got a great opportunity here, uh, for a site close to transit. There really is nothing else like this on the horizon left in Melo Park, I believe. Uh, so I would like to encourage more housing. Uh, I would be amenable to higher densities for housing. Uh, I think the site layout is very, uh, I feel that it's, um, respectful of the neighbors. I like the townhouses as a bridge to the existing residential neighbors. I like the three stories on sort of the front edge of the property and the five stories a little bit behind. I would support higher densities, especially if they were behind the five stories. So it's kind of graduated. Uh, I'd also support more of the land being used for residential as opposed to office uses. Um, in general, I think the site layout is, is good. The building orientations, I appreciate the fact they're maintaining the heritage trees. Side access, I think is well thought out. I, I hear the objections to residential. Access on Laurel, but I think we, we need residential development. And I think they've done a good job in keeping the commercial access at least off Laurel. Conceptual architectural styles, I believe, uh, it's very appropriate. It's early stages. We don't have anything definite to look at. Uh, but I think the mission sounds very appropriate. Design layout of open space looks good to me. Parking locations ratios. Uh, well, all I can say is it's better than what's there now. I'm sure some of my fellow commissioners are going to have more to say about parking. Proposed sustainability measures, again, it's early, early days, but I appreciate the lead goal. So generally, I'm supportive of, of what I'm seeing. Uh, I would like to see more housing. Uh, and I believe that Commissioner Kennedy had her hand up first, so we'll go to you.
Thank you, Chairman Dorn. Um, generally, I'm supportive of this project. I would like to. Echo my, uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Dorn sentiments around increased density. I think significantly increasing density is what's called for on this project. I know we have seen, um, a number of, uh, letters into the Planning Commission. Over the last few days on contemplating what it would look like to. Take a full acre and go and move into partnership with an affordable housing developer and really make a dent. Into providing meaningful, affordable housing. That would also start to perhaps help us embrace. What is starting to happen across both Santa Clara and San Mateo counties as we move towards the attempt at functional zero and homelessness. It is an issue up and up and down the peninsula, across the bay and up into Marin County. It is real, it is meaningful, it is incredibly challenging. There is absolutely no way that we can stick our heads in the ground and think that. We're not going to build as much housing as we possibly can across all affordabilities. We have made a very poignant, uh, stand on developing as much above market rate housing as we possibly can. I think Parkline is our hope for putting the right amount of housing at the right densities downtown where it belongs.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes is next.
Thank you, Chair Dorn. I appreciate that. In the spirit of a study session, I do have some, some questions and some of it will be directed at staff. As well. So my first question is. To, to staff through the chair. This plan area, which the proposed project is in. Is it outside a downtown specific plan? And, uh, if so, what community amenities. Program would it fall into?
Yes, so it is outside the specific plan. There's no specific community amenities program. Um, what the applicant, applicant is asking for is a new general plan designation, new zoning ordinance. Use zoning ordinance amendment, um, that the property would be rezoned to. So as part of those, there could be, um, a community amenity incorporated. And, um, certainly the development agreement also gives the. Applicant vested rights in exchange for some type of community amenity that's negotiated.
Thank you. So that's a, that's a to be negotiated. So, I'm sorry, and then, and another question, uh, to staff as well, since I have you, Corinna. Thank you. Would the traffic impact fees from this development? Would, for instance, the Willow Road corridor. Fall into, as it's currently contemplated, would it fall into a plan area which would. Be a recipient of traffic impact fees from this project?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we'd, um, need to work with transportation. I'm not exactly sure how the. How the, those fees, once they're collected, are allocated.
Okay, so we tend to be a geographic, uh, discussion, just as we have down in the Bellhaven neighborhood. As it relates to developments and how it's spread throughout the neighborhood. It will be figuring out what geographic area in proximity to this would be eligible for that. Okay, thank you for that. So as I work backwards from some of the community amenities piece, I like the idea of the sports field. It's clear that that is not, quote, a community amenity. in the in the formal sense, but more of a, here's what we want to put on our site. What do you think of it? So question to the applicant. That sports area, would it be contemplated as something that the Park and Recs community would program? Who would be in charge of figuring out what was there and who programmed it?
So thank you for the question. We're very open minded as to how it's going to be programmed to to give you what the what our intent is. Is that kind of corner? I think it was remarked that's a good location for it being near MA. That that's really a a community amenity in the sense that that's sports field and there's there's meant to be kind of a a park area adjacent to it as well, as well as that community building, which will have public restrooms, you know, juice bar, things like that. That really is kind of a community area as opposed to an amenity base for our office occupants or for our residents. So it's really meant to be that sports field is meant to be a YSO or, you know, rec leagues or things like that, as opposed to, you know, the office occupants going out there and having a you know, having a soccer game in the middle of the day. Hopefully, it can be both. But we intend that to be to be truly a, you know, kind of community sports field. So as far as who manages it, Parks and Rec sounds like a, you know, the 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 right group to do that, but we're open minded and you know, very early in the game in terms of of developing those ideas.
Are you done, Commissioner Barnes? We seem I seem to have lost him.
Yeah, he might have dropped off.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Commissioner Riggs. If we get Commissioner Barnes back, we'll give him a shot. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, Chair Dorn. I also would like to start with a couple of questions. There were some statements made during a public comment that implied perhaps a a different understanding of the project than I have. So I would just like to confirm as part of this hearing process. The I'll see if I can actually read some numbers myself if I have them. I'm looking for the well, first I thought it it might be helpful for those who follow city issues to compare this project to another large project. I believe the Willow Village that is proposed by Meta is approximately fifty-three acres. And impressed us with its size and its density. For comparison, this project is actually larger, sixty-three acres. Willow Village, I think, has a net increase of somewhere around nine hundred thousand to a million square feet. Given that there are already occupied R and D buildings there. If I understand it correctly, and through the chair, perhaps Ms. Sandomeyer could confirm. I believe that we are looking at in the range of three to four hundred thousand square feet, maybe three hundred thousand square feet of existing office R and D with a proposed increase of one point one million square feet office and R and D. Am I about right?
One point one million would be new buildings replacing the old older buildings. But only the residential square foot is additional. So the what the SRI campus currently has about one point three eight million square feet. And the existing and proposed non-residential together would again total about one point three eight million square feet.
All right, I see. So on page three, the breakdown is of existing building to remain and new structures to replace existing. I I think I see. So we'll end up with the same roughly one point four million square feet that we currently have at SRI. So my next question would be, what is the approximate occupied density of SRI at this time? I mean, we're aware that there is surface parking. And one can roughly estimate the use of that parking from Google. But I thought I would just ask, are we currently occupying a million square feet, five hundred thousand square feet, three hundred thousand square feet? What is what is the, shall we say, office occupancy participation at at this time?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information. I don't know if anyone from the applicant team has that.
Yeah, we actually don't have that information as well. Obviously, the last couple of years for SRI and any other, you know, commercial occupant has been, you know, significantly disrupted, to say the least, by by COVID. I think their, you know, SRI's intent is certainly to consolidate into those three existing buildings, which total about two hundred eighty thousand square feet. I think they're spread out in 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 much more now. But yeah, in in general, I think the, you know, the the number has been deflated the last couple of years due to COVID.
Okay, so we would, we would just have to look at something historic and then you know, like a a twenty twenty Google map or something like that. Or twenty nineteen Google map. The the reason that I ask is that while we're all aware of the level of traffic involved with the Meta buildings, formerly Facebook, there are one, two, three clusters of roughly five hundred thousand square feet. And many of us in town are acutely aware of how much traffic comes in and out of each cluster. I think it's safe to say that certainly for me, in the twenty-some years that I've been in Menlo Park and regularly going down Ringwood and Ravenswood, I've never seen even a fraction of that activity in the parking lots of SRI. So am I off base here? Am I just going at the wrong hours? Or you know, is that a is that a fair judgment?
You know, we've only been involved recently, so I I think there has been, you know, the last couple of years, a, you know, a decline in usage of the site for a number of reasons. But I think if you go back to, you know, the last conditional development permit, which I think is circa two thousand four. You know, I think the the headcount cap from that approval was about thirty-two hundred people or so. So I think at that that time, that was kind of the 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 usage of the campus. But yeah, that that has declined, I think. You know, significantly since I I don't know exactly in terms of the quantifying that. But again, in terms of measuring baselines for for what's going forward, like even if you put aside, you know, potential redevelopment or reentitlement of the site. You know, if a site's underutilized today, like that, that's not a good indicator of what will be in the future, even alone, right? So there's a
Right. No, I I'll tell you, the reason for my questions is the my my sense of what level of understanding is out there, including among the twenty-three callers that we had tonight about what this project is. We all heard how people are supportive of this project because it will be affordable housing. We heard that people are supportive of this housing because it will serve the developmentally developmentally disabled. We heard people say how much they were looking forward to a housing project. And and yet, when we look at the scope of the project, we will have approximately one point four million square feet of office space and four hundred units of housing proposed. And by comparison, Willow Village is something over one thousand seven hundred proposed housing units. And it's already been determined that they are providing significantly less housing than they will be generating additional workers, significantly less. I think somewhere in the range of one third. So I thought that since since the hearing is largely to put a project out in the open and let people, not just seven esoteric commissioners, but that the public get a sense of what is being proposed. It helps to put some things in scale and in comparison. I think if if I can be so bold, it's it's reasonable for me to say of the Parkline project, this is not a housing development project. And and I just think that that helps be clear. Now, that doesn't in any way mean that I'm opposed to it unless it is a housing project. I'm not, but I I did think that it would be clear. So I read from the public one, one question, perhaps delving a little bit deeper into what to expect in the way of number of workers and therefore housing jobs imbalance or traffic or however people see it. And and we've already had a hearing that talked about cars and how much impacts can be amended realistically. So when one talks about R and D space, for example, in a biomed campus, indeed, one is expecting large open spaces with a few workers who are walking around and looking at things. When we build five-story office buildings, potentially, it's quite a different density. You know, that perhaps the most notable example on the other end of the scale being Facebook. So the question has been asked, and and I'm I'm not asking it for tonight, but the prompt is out there. How much office, how much R and D, and therefore, really, what population can be expected? But we do have three parking structures proposed. So I think it's fair to say Parkline has some concept of how much, you know, what kind of density they're expecting. So if each parking structure is, say, seven hundred cars, you're expecting something in the neighborhood of two thousand workers. If you recently had three thousand workers, but you're changing the density of the buildings because they're moving from almost, well, predominantly R and D to probably more office than R and D. Perhaps you're expecting six thousand workers. So I think that will be something by our next conversation that people will want to know. So I too would would like to answer the seven prompts from staff, although I'm going to skip a number of them in the interest of time. So the proposed land uses and site density intensity, we're prompted to comment. The the most notable thing is that this is not a jobs and housing imbalance correcting project. It's fair to say it will be the other way. The the question will be, but how much? This may not be the project that needs to be addressing the jobs and housing imbalance, but just to point out where it appears that we are. So site layout, including building orientations. Since this project is predominantly an office space project, it seems to make sense to put the office space as close as possible to the train station. If we're going to have potentially four hundred new apartments, but three thousand, five thousand, six thousand new jobs or jobs that are not currently visible and have not been visible since I've been in Menlo Park in terms of, you know, cars coming in and out of campus. Then certainly, the the numbers say by something like ten to one or maybe more that the office space could take advantage of the transportation much better and more in a more immediate way than the housing. So perhaps the housing might move what what we call east, well, what we call south, but east toward the Burgess community. And the office building be more clustered toward Ravenswood and Laurel. I I think I'll I'll just prompt that that might be worth looking at. Having said that, then I really don't have any comments on site access or design layout of open space, parking locations or ratios and because those would theoretically be rethought. Then in terms of conceptual architectural styles, I think whatever one's personal opinion about architecture might be in order to fit into a community and to fit into this this community, you probably can't go wrong with the approach that you've taken. I think it shows just simple wisdom. And certainly, when it's done well, as we've seen in parts of Palo Alto and well, and and parts of two projects that are currently in construction on El Camino and Menlo Park, that it can be really exciting. So I apologize if that is disruptive, but I I hope it's useful as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. We lost part of your comments, but I do want to give Commissioner Harris a chance to speak since she's not had a chance yet.
Hi there. I think a few of us were having some connectivity issues. I know I got knocked I got knocked out of the internet. So I'm on a hotspot now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. So as many people have said, this is, this really truly is a unique opportunity for our city to transform an aging property with limited use to an open mixed-use neighborhood. I'm thrilled that we've had so much community interest. We've received so many letters. I think I've received more letters and emails on this than I ever have in my albeit short time on this commission. So I'm really excited about that. I've read all every single one of them and appreciate everyone taking all the time. It's super helpful to us. Of course, if we have that many people interested, we have a very bunch of different ideas of of what we all want, and we've all got a lot of a lot of things we we would like to ask for. So I know that you all are going to have a pretty tough time. I don't envy you, but I think there are just so many terrific opportunities. Before I get to my quick thoughts and questions on future adjustments to this project, I just want to praise you all for a number of things, the twenty-five acres of public available green space holding on to those heritage trees and kind of puzzling your buildings around them is really terrific, eliminating the entrances on Laurel except for the residential, I think, is thank you for listening to the community input. I'm so excited about the bike path and the connectivity. I mean, now, if you live in West Menlo and you go to MA, you can just ride all the way through without the the dangers that you seek now, and it or you could also ride on the other side on Ravenswood. Without the, the dangers that you seek now and it, or you could also ride on the other side on Ravenswood in your, but in the bike path, so. Super excited for that. I think that's going to be really helpful for all of us. I think again, like, like. Commissioner Riggs, I agree that you can't go wrong with that attractive mission style and the way that you've set the five stories back from the three stories. I think that's great. The fifty foot setback from Burgess Classics. So I, I love all those things. I, I have two kind of areas of concern or interest and the main, the main one that I hear from. From a lot of the. Residents nearby is traffic. And traffic and traffic and how can we mitigate that to increase with this project and. As we put together a transportation demand plan, some things that, that I think we might want to consider and that I would support are thinking a little bit further out of the box. I know you all have. Said that you were interested in shuttles, I think a shuttle that goes to Caltrain and then, hey, why don't you also take it to downtown and maybe circle around to Safeway and back, you know, I think that would be really helpful. But I'd like to go a little further than that. So, you know, we've looked at trip caps, places where we've had some success there. I'd love to see that. Eliminate, I would also like to see us in Menlo Park eliminate parking minimum requirements entirely. In order to significant reduce, significantly reduce people driving and parking on this site. We are, it is such a lovely location. We're close to the Caltrain, we're close to buses on ECR and we're close to downtown amenities, so I don't, I just don't see. The need for as much parking as what we have there. I'd like to see, you know, we have currently three large parking structures that take up. In my opinion, too much precious land that could be used for additional housing. I wonder, did you consider putting the parking underground? If I may ask, is that something that you considered at all? Because then we would have more room for additional residences. In addition to reducing the parking.
Yeah, i- it is something we, we considered. I, I think one of the big drawbacks to parking underground is you, is you're digging. Right? If you take a three level parking deck and, and essentially submerge it, you're essentially. You're, you're increasing your construction timing by nearly two X. I think there's also an environmental impact and just a construction noise impact of having. You know, hundreds if not thousands of trucks kind of removing dirt. The end result is, is nice. In terms of like kind of making the, you know, the parking deck sort of disappear, you can put, you know. Sports fields or things on top of them, but there is kind of a heavy, heavy pressure. Also, honestly, you know, big costs in terms of, of doing that, but there's also. A, a, a lot of disruption. And with this site, I think we had the, we had the space to kind of play with it where you can still, you know, yield that twenty-five acres and still have housing and. Twenty-five acres of open space can still generate housing in office and things like that, so we didn't feel it was, it was necessary.
If I may also. If I may, you know, the other thing we, we did consider this, as Mark indicated, but we also thought about. You know, if we were submerged, the parking. It, it would. We were challenged about saving the heritage trees. So it was a balance because, you know, if you underground the parking, it probably takes more area because you can't go as far below grade and. It, 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 it put us in conflict with. Some of our goals to try to save as many of the heritage trees as, as we could.
Yeah, there's a lot of goals that are in conflict. Well, I, I'd like to, you know, to Commissioner Riggs's comments about the office space, we, we're. You know, the difference in the number of office workers. For R and D versus. Regular office is a pretty big delta and. That also means that that's a pretty big different number that you might need for parking and so. I would like to see when you come back next, if you've got a little bit better, I realize that you don't know yet, but to have a little bit better of a sense of how many workers that is and then. I'd like to see that parking reduced. By a lot and maybe some ideas of how we might do that. And if we as a city need to help you with that. Then I think, please let us know and I think, I think we, we probably will. Parking's not free and I also would, maybe you can stretch and consider, you know, you're going to charge for parking, both the residents with unbundled parking, but also. The offices and or give rebates for people who are not driving the car to work. So I'd like to really feel like how we can stretch. To really reduce that parking. And then therefore reducing the traffic in the area. Then the second main thing that I would want to say is, like many others, I think this is such an amazing. Opportunity and a site and we really should consider increasing. The number of housing units. I'd like to see more density and again, if you reduce some parking, you're going to have more space and more funds to do that, so. I do, I, I read with interest the ideas from many folks of carving out an one acre area to partner with a nonprofit housing. Group so that we can get more density and have housing for people of all abilities and that deeply affordable housing that we really need in this area. So I think those are my main things. You know, we're, we're close to Samtrans ECR, the train station. I mean, there's just, and so, and also deeply affordable. Units are less likely to need cars, right? So that's going to also help us with the parking and that ratio there. As we get closer, I'd like to review the recreational field recreational site. I know that's not set in stone and I'd like to understand what makes the most sense. Both for the community, you know, it's right across the street from MA. What, what makes the most sense for the community? Is it truly a recreation field? And if so, what type? I, I don't, I don't know that yet, so I think we, that's gotta, we'll, we'll have to get there, but we're not, I think it's a little early for that. I think that's all, but overall, I'm super excited. I like how you've laid it out and really appreciate all the work on this. Thanks.
Thank you. It's ten fifty-nine. We have two commissioners that have their hands up, so. We have to make a decision. I would like to propose that we take a vote on. Extending the meeting time tonight, but by a finite amount, and I would propose twenty minutes. Because I know we have commissioners that have some severe time constraints. Would anyone care to make a motion to extend tonight's meeting? Otherwise, we have to stop it now. Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I guess I would say, can we make it thirty? Because I've just taken a lot of time and I want to make sure that all the other commissioners have a chance.
Commissioner Kennedy, I'd like to see what Commissioner Kennedy has to say on that before we. Move to a vote.
Yeah, you know, I think that if we can all just keep our comments to like five minutes, we could get out of here by eleven fifteen. This is the first time, this is the first time we're hearing this project is going to come before us many, many times. I think that they're going to do a lot of takeaways, so. You know, maybe we can say eleven fifteen.
Commissioner Harris, would you like to? Consider amending your motion to extend to eleven fifteen?
Okay, I'd like to amend it to eleven twenty, as, as the chair said before, please.
Do I have a second for eleven twenty? I'll second the motion, so let's take a vote. Commissioner Barnes? It looked like a yes, but you're immune. Thank you. Vice Chair DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Sure.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so the motion carries seven zero. So Commissioner Barnes, you're next with your hand up.
Of courtesy to my fellow commissioner DeCarty, I'm happy to yield to him for half of my time or half of the time.
So I, I see that Commissioner Tate is actually in the next position. I think the hands. Should go up in order, so I think Commissioner Tate must have had her hand up before Commissioner, Vice Chair DeCarty.
And that.
I did not. I just put my hand up, so DeCarty can go before me.
Commissioner DeCarty?
I talked a bunch on the, on an earlier item. I'm very happy to, if I get squeezed at the end, it's no problem. I prefer Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Tate to have their opportunity.
Someone talk.
Commissioner Tate, do you want to go?
Okay, I, I guess that's me, right?
Yes.
No one wants to go first. So I, I. My biggest concerns about this project is that it's not enough housing, which we've heard. Already folks commenting on and I do like the idea, if possible, about donating or a couple acres, not just one. For a nonprofit or a low income housing developer to do their thing on the site. And I'm, I'm also concerned about the field and where it is and, and the church that's there because I do believe that they need to be able to have, have. Quiet for, for their activities there and, and being a good neighbor as you have before. I'm sure you're considering moving the field somewhere so that they will have that. Quiet time when they need it as opposed to having all the ruckus outside or some kind of way to come to a compromise there. Excuse me. So those are, are basically my comments and, and I, my assumption. Is that there would be some sort of security. To make sure that the grounds are safe. And I, I have not heard that as a response to any of the comments that were made previously by the adjacent community. So I'm interested to know what your thoughts are of keeping the property secure in those open spaces in the evening time. Because that, that would be important for people. All right, that's all I have.
I would, yeah, but like to address the security question.
Sure, a- absolutely. So the, you know, twenty-five acres, I mean, it would still be privately owned, so it's something we're trying to create an amenity. At the same time, we're not trying to burden either neighbors or the city, so we're not going to. Literally turn them over and expect, you know, kind of the city to, to manage and maintain those. How I would envision it and, and we're very open to discussing this with the city is that we would be. You know, privately develop it, privately maintain it, but then there'd be kind of a public access license or easement. To, to use it, you know, a- as a park during certain hours, but in terms of. You know, can someone go through there at two AM? Like, this would be private property. We would be responsible for securing it. We'd have every incentive to, to secure it. As, as the property owner for the, for the benefit of, of the occupants, residents who live there. But I, I think that's something we can, we're very confident we can, we can manage around.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry. So I'm. So now I, I am interested to know also whether or not you have given any consideration to donating some of the land.
Yeah, so we, we've been talking to.
Because I'm sure this is not the first time you've thrown this out.
Yeah, I know that this is actually an idea that, you know, we, we were talking with, with different groups like Menlo Together and other residents about. Asking us, how do you generate, you know, more affordable housing? And that was kind of an idea that's been, that's been discussed and we're, we're very open to it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the applicant for your presentation tonight. We appreciate it. This is an important area of the community. In addition to all the things that work about the project, I think. A couple areas that. Could use some thinking as well as, if I start with, for instance, the twenty-five acres of, of green space. I conceptualize that well as being. Good for the site and good for, for instance, the, the office users and the residential. And if I look at the commons area in the middle. I do think it's underutilizing the site. I think that while that's accretive to the people who will be leasing and renting there, I think there's more that can be done on the site. And I'll go back and then, you know, if I start, for instance, with the fields, in the dirt of fields. That can be programmed than as having a ten-year-old son and knowing how hard it is to get. You know, AYSO select fields or get lacrosse fields or get any number of different. Field times. I'd be interested in not only one, but two fields on the, on the site and, and not fields in the sense of. A field that's available as a, as an amenity for your tenants, but a field that is in fact programmed. By a third party so that if you are strikers or AYSO or women's lacrosse or boys' lacrosse or whatever it is. For the health and wellness of our, of our young folks, fields that are programmed by, for instance, parking racks, so. Looking at that as part of your community amenity package as opposed to a tenant amenity and a feature of the property, I think. I'll be bullish. I'll say we could use two fields at the very least on this site and I think. You know, I think. Anyone who's been on this. Planning commission meetings with me before, I have no use for in lieu fees. What I do have a use for is an accretive benefit that's material and tangible to the community that, for instance, only this. Property can offer and it does, given its proximity to so many different areas, this is a unique site and only this offer could. Only this property could offer, for instance, an amenity like that, so. I'll be bullish on that. I will add my voice to the. Idea of. Parcelling out. Some of the, the property, be it an acre or so for. Of deeply affordable housing project. I mean, we aren't going to get there through the BMR. BMR is effectively a tax on the other renters who are working hard to pay their rent in the same building. But when you have a deeply affordable. Project, you have different funding mechanisms that serve to spread the burden of either the capital stack or the ongoing. Operating costs of the property, so I'm very much in favor of looking at a deeply affordable. Component that'll be, for instance. You know. A light tech or a tax credit, the finance property onsite, it'd be good for Menlo Park, it'd be good for San Mateo County. See what else. And then if I just jump the shark here in terms of going down the road. You know, the, the impact, we talked about traffic and transit and transportation and looking at, for instance. The impact to the Willow Middlefield Woodland intersection and what this is going to do. Because there's only one way to get in and out from this project to one oh one and there's one corridor and that's a two lane road called Willow Road, so we've spoken about. Other impacts associated with the site and traffic and make no mistake, you know. When you're going east, it only goes in one direction. It goes down Willow and that intersection at that area. So as, you know, we get further down the road and we talk about the impacts. We'll certainly be wanting to talk about what this impacts from a transportation, transit, infrastructure. Standpoint. So that's it for, for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty. Vice Chair DeCarty.
Mr. Tate, you have a follow-up you wanted to touch on?
I do. Thank you. I just want to make sure I be on the record and, and make sure that I was clear. And, and that is one or two acres donated for. Low income housing by, you know, someone who is, that's their, that's their gig, but that is not. In lieu of, of the below market units that you would be. Providing, so I just want to be clear because I do believe that integrated. Housing is better than just all in one building, but I understand the need and you have the property size to make it happen, so I just wanted to make sure to clarify that. Thank you. DeCarty, I'm done.
Good, thank you. Really appreciate the time, really appreciate, you know, there are forty members of our community that are still with us right now that you're caring about this project. Echo, thanks for you all. SR and Parkline, I think overall this project is off to a fabulous start. I think what you're trying to do and what you've presented, the direction you're going on a bunch of this, I think can work really well. Everything from the architectural piece that you've gotten some feedback on to the way that you can move through with bike head to trying to preserve trees, all of that, I think, is a lot to be able to build on. I think there's some hairy things to sort out. I completely agree with it. Questions about placement of the field, some of those other things, but I think the core thing comes down to two things that simply are not working and need to work in a fundamentally different way. One of them is affordable housing. And I suppose at one level, where we are right now, I think with four hundred units at fifteen percent means we're looking at about sixty units of affordable housing. That's one unit of affordable housing per acre. On this property. And I think the simplest thing to do is to try to set a goal for affordable housing and then you all can sort out what does that mean for density or for what you need to do for. Office or the other ways to be able to get what you need to out of it, but that goal needs to be significantly higher than sixty units. It needs to be two. But that goal needs to be significantly higher than 60 units. It needs to be 200 units. Needs to be 300 units. Need to explore with the city council, 500 units. What would that look like? Affordable housing at that level? And then what does the wraparound of the project look like? So that's how much I think to push the envelope. But at a minimum of putting my finger or thumb on the scales of fellow commissioners who said how important the affordable housing piece is and then how to be able to make the rest of that work. Uh, and then the second one is the congestion that comes with attracting so many people to this area and what to do about that. And we are not going to be able to park in garage our way out of the congestion. Commissioner Barnes was just eloquent about the two lane road that is Willow that comes in and out there. You all have proposed shuttles and I'll disclose, I've had the opportunity to have a walk through with Mr. Murray before, which is really helpful for me. You know, electric shuttles that go from the site down to Caltrain, that's a beginning point. But it seems to me, again, I think with working with the city council, we could open this up. And as Commissioner Harris said, the opportunity to actually look across our community and finally get the connectivity from Bayfront to downtown that gets folks out of cars in a way that they would actually get out of their cars. That could work for your development, but as a catalyst to make it work for the rest of the community. I think this is one of these go big moments. If you are saddled with sorting out your parking problem, congestion problem, it's not going to work for you. It's not going to work for the community. So I think we need to look at this at a broader level and finally take the nut of what is happening here. We have major developments that now connect Bayfront where we've got a bunch of development and downtown, where we have a bunch of development all along Willow Road. We've talked about Willow Village. We're looking at Life Sciences and the Tarleton properties. Who knows what happens next with what's going on with USGS on Middlefield. Come around to your project and eventually we have to sort out downtown and housing there. Well, what are we doing as a community to connect that with something besides single occupancy vehicles? Now's the time. It's not your responsibility to own it, but I think it is your responsibility to catalyze it to help make this project work. So those are my two big things that I think aren't actually doable right now in the envelope of what you're proposing. I think the rest of what you're proposing is solvable, both because you're off to a fabulous start and because there are so many committed members of the community that have given you fabulous feedback so far. Really appreciate your time and your leadership on the project. It's going to be fabulous for our community when it's done.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. And just doubling down for a moment, you know, this project in USGS and the rest of it, we've had Willow Road discussions often as they relate to Mill Haven and that area. We are going to need to be thinking about how that corridor works now that we're going to have meaningful housing development. So with each and every housing unit that gets added, there needs to be, you know, uh, there needs to be an infrastructure, whatever that looks like. It can be light infrastructure, it can be, um, mobility infrastructure. Infrastructure doesn't necessarily mean pouring concrete. But what it does mean is understanding the throughputs and how this is going to work at those, at that intersection and all of this running through it. So I'm saying now that this is, you know, this is an important topic and I'm going to stay on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you. It is 11:15. We have a small chance for anyone else to get another comment before we need to adjourn 11:20. Anyone has any further comments or questions? Who wants, uh, Commissioner Riggs?
See if I can do this in 60 seconds. Um, first, I, I want to lend my support to the vice chair's call for action for transit from Bayfront past SRI and to the Caltrain station. It is time. Of course, this will require our city council to do something a little bit more local than they're inclined to. The other thing is, I mean, there are a lot of big issues here. I'm a little surprised that city staff had not addressed this. I brought this up, uh, the last time we talked about this project. I brought this up in something like 2004. Ravenswood and Ringwood make the most awful intersection right now. And there is an opportunity here to bring Ravenswood around the church property and align it with, uh, Ringwood. That is a dangerous intersection for pedestrians, of which we have hundreds coming from the high school. It's particularly dangerous for a bike going down, um, southbound nominally on, uh, Middlefield and crossing that, uh, loop connector. And frankly, it's been an annoyance to everyone that has to navigate those double traffic lights. It's, it's just time to fix it. Um, and this, it's a big ask. But I think it's something that the city needs to step forward, uh, and work on. And I apologize that, um, that it's gotten this far, but I think we should work on that. So, uh, I, I do want to just quickly say, I very much thank, in spite of all these comments that we've thrown at you, I very much appreciate that Parkline has brought this forward to us with such, uh, large goals. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it's 11:18. So I think I will close the study session. Thank you very much, the applicant, for your presentation tonight and putting up with, uh, our comments and questions. Next item on our agenda is informational items from the Sandmeyer. We've got a couple of meetings on the agenda. Anything else to inform us about in the Sandmeyer?
So the next meeting, um, will be April 11th. Um, the Citizen M project will be coming back. That was previously continued. And then we'll have, uh, two single family use permit projects.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'm going to, oh, uh, we have a minute left and Vice Chair DeCarty was first with the hand.
Yeah, for a future agenda item, I just want to put a pin on an item that Commissioner Harris raised before about looking at level of service. I appreciate that you, um, said that we would do that. And I'm very much looking forward to that opportunity in a future meeting. Um, and I will not be here on the 11th.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Tate.
Um, yes, I, I would like to, um, have a, an agenda item to, um, talk a little further about, uh, parking. Um, and, and how we can get around that because we, uh, the project that we saw earlier on Bay Road, that's a lost opportunity because of parking. And I would hate to see this continue. And I, I think, uh, Commissioner Riggs, uh, kind of wanted to review ordinances and, and, or something a while ago. And, and hopefully we'll be able to put that on our agenda sometime soon to, to really know what's up to date. I know we're at 11:20, but maybe, uh, Riggs can, uh, narrow this down for me because I, I'm not saying it correctly, but there are some things that we do need to take a look at, I believe, for us to function better as a commission.
Thank you. With that, it's 11:20. We need to adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone, for staying late tonight. And we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair and fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Chair Doran.